This conference will now be recorded.
All right, welcome everyone, welcome to Unity Week at Heber City. Today is June 4th, 2024, and this is a meeting of the Heber City Council. It is now 6:00 PM, and I want to welcome the other council members that have joined us. We have in attendance Scott Phillips, Erin Sheetwood, Yvonne Barney, Mike Johnston, and Councilmember Sid Ostergaard has been excused tonight. Okay, we are ready to dive in with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Yvonne Barney will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then after she's done, a prayer or a thought can be given by anyone that would like to come forward and give a prayer or thought at the podium. If no one does, then Councilmember Mike Johnston will do that, will go to that point.
Anyone like to give an opening thought? So this week is our Community Unity Week in Heber City. I hope you all know that, it's just after Public Works Week. But first week in June, and we've got a lot of good things going on. There's the Thursday kickoff of Farmer's Market, Heber Market on Main. It's Thursday, so everyone's invited, and that's the first concert. And then Saturday is our annual Main Street Flower Planting Day and Continued Cleanup. We also got the rededication of the city Tabernacle Building at 1:00. 1:00 rebuilt the bell tower, we've scraped and painted every exterior surface. We've got the new water feature out here and the landscaping, it's just beautiful. So you're all welcome to come, I think this is great. I love the idea of unity, it really is the only way we can move forward. I don't know who said this, I don't remember anyway, but I remember the phrase, "Individually, we are a drop, but together, we are an ocean." And I think that's really important to remember. As a city, we've been, we're managing and planning for the growth that has been here and is continuing to come over the next 20 years or so at least. And I think it's really important, we're a city of diverse people, diverse backgrounds, diverse experiences, diverse beliefs and faiths, diverse ideas, and we can be stronger if we can unify our diversity and our differences rather than splitting off into teams and clubs and groups and tribes and camps and thinking that we're not the same. So I wanted to make sure we come together. So I have two quotes I want to share. Mahatma Gandhi famously said, "Our ability to reach unity in diversity will be the beauty and the test of our civilization." And I think we can all look back on how, if we've come together in certain communities we've been involved in, we can do many more things. And then I'll end with another well-known quote that I really like from Elder Neil L. Anderson. Quote, "As men and women, as sisters and brothers, as sons and daughters of God, we move forward together." And we as a city, I think, and as a city council are moving forward, and we should continue to move forward with unity. So let's celebrate our unity this month, and I'll see you Thursday night at Heber Market on Main. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Conflict of Interest Disclosure for anyone on the council that has any conflicts of interest for agenda items. Are there any conflicts of interest?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from Action Item 5, the Gary Bush Annexation Discussion. I'll just sit in the audience because I actually have been working with Gary Bush over the last year surveying his property, and we've talked about the annexation. And so I have been representing him in that capacity.
Thank you, and we will still have a quorum for that agenda item as long as the rest of you stay. All right, I am so happy for the next agenda item. This is where I get to give Mayor's Awards. So I would like all the Public Works employees to please come up, and then when I say your name, just go ahead and raise it so we all know who you are. So please come forward, and Missy, if you don't mind giving everybody a bag while I read this. All right, so some on the Public Works Department are getting more than one award tonight, and you will all see that, but come on up here and look at everybody else that's in the audience, and let me get started. So back on April 23rd, the Public Works Department responded to an incredibly significant water main break on 1200 South. It involved a 16-inch pipe, sorry. The break caused extensive water flow into the storm drain system, and it necessitated this incredibly huge rush order for repair parts that were delivered in the afternoon. It also really affected the hospital and other surrounding businesses on 1200 South. So this crew worked tirelessly from 8:30 AM till 11:30 PM to locate and then excavate and repair the damaged section, which turned into, I think, a few dozen feet of pipe. And they re-pressurized it until the 1:00 AM to restore the water service. During the repair, the administrative team stayed on duty too. And so that's our administrative team at Public Works. They assisted the affected residents, the businesses, they coordinated with the schools and the police for the traffic and the worksite safety, and on and on. Their dedication is remarkable, working 15 hours straight without meal breaks to minimize disruption and restore the water service so promptly. We can't thank you enough for your commitment and your hard work and your dedication to our community to do this. So now let me say who's who, and you raise your hand when it's your turn. So Thomas Coleman, he's our Water Crew Foreman, thank you, Thomas. And then Justin Motley's on the crew, Blake Walton, where's Blake? No, he's not here, okay, Christian Payan, thank you, Christian, Kayden Davis, and then Kayden Giles, and then Ryan Keel, and Riley Fairborn, and Zachary Maxwell, and Ryan Walton, and Matt Zeltinger. Am I saying that right, Zeltinger, okay. And then Chris Pedersen, he's our Safety Officer and Program Compliance Administrator. Where's Candace, there you are Candace, our Office Manager, Tess Ford, our new Administrative Assistant, also helped, and of course, Missy Luke. So everybody, big round of applause for our Public Works. I also want to thank you for a terrific Public Works Week. And so now, if I can, let me come shake your hands, but then the rest of you, you're welcome to sit down except for Chris Brandon and Zachary. Okay? Okay, now, we've also had our Public Works Week in May, super fun, lots of great citizen participation, and they got to see all your skills at the Backhoe Rodeo. For the second consecutive year, our Heber City Public Works Team won the Backhoe Operation Team Event. Give yourself some applause there. It's called the Heavy Equipment Rodeo or the Backhoe Rodeo, but I think Backhoe Rodeo sounds pretty fun. The competition tested participants on their backhoe skills, like picking up an egg on a spoon, or putting a hard hat on a traffic cone, inserting metal pipes into a wooden box, all with a backhoe, everyone, or a water meter lid. So we want to congratulate our top scoring members here, who achieved impressive scores. A special commendation goes to Chris Pedersen, who secured first place by completing the course in a record time. This is a record time, 5 minutes 10 seconds, and also won the individual award in the Backhoe Skills Competition. So Chris, go ahead, raise your hand again. Okay, now you're Zachary, yeah, Zachary, he also won on the Water Tech Crew. What did you win, Zach? I'm sorry, I don't have it here. Came in third, and that was on the... It was in the team, it was in the team competition. Okay, and so where's Brandon? Brandon's not here, so Brandon Healy also won, he's from the Sewer Crew. Matt Kenner, I'd like you to come up as the Public Works Director and say a few words.
Thanks, Mayor. I do want to just echo what you said about the previous award for that water leak. I honestly do not think that many people out there have any idea what goes into repairing a water leak that was that major especially, but even smaller water leaks, but especially in a road like that one where there's just constant traffic. And I do appreciate you as well recognizing the admin staff because they might not be in the trench, but they're getting mud-slinged at them from customers. So, and then as well with the Backhoe Skills Competition, it's always good to put another trophy in the shelf. I appreciated the different municipalities that participated this year. We did have Jordan L., we invited Jordan L. We had Midway City Public Works, we had Wasatch County and the Wasatch County Transfer Station. We definitely appreciated them participating, made it a lot of fun, so congratulations.
I don't know if it will ever go statewide, but I'm sure you guys are up to the challenge. Okay? All right, well, let's get a picture, Matt, with you up here. Anybody in the council, you're welcome to come down, and we'll get a picture for our Backhoe Rodeo winners. We understand if the Public Works Department's worked enough today and would like to have a break, we understand, or you're welcome to stay. Okay, next council is the Consent Agenda Two Items, Approval of the May 21st, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes. And secondly, is a Reaffirmation or Approval for URS for the 2024 Tier 2 Public Safety Contributions that are already paid by Heber City. If you have any questions on that, council, Cherie is here to answer any questions. So is there any questions, comments, motions on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, there's a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll start on this end, please, with a vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, that passes 4 to 0 with Sid excused. All right, now everyone, it's time for the Public Comments Section. This is up to 20 minutes for any of you to say whatever you'd like to say about agenda items or any other issue. If you're online, you're welcome to come off mute, and I'm happy to call on you then. So now the Public Comment Section is open. You have three minutes max, and please tell us your name when you come forward. All right, since no one's come forward yet, Councilmember Yvonne Barney has a public comment to read.
It's not really a read, and this would be for Chiefs Ever and the public, I guess, just anyone. I was contacted by a citizen, a concerned citizen, with a couple of addresses, and I can't say that over line, but their concerns were with blocking point of view and some turns. They're also concerned because they said that there have been in a certain area in the community where there are very large tractor trailers that are being parked in front of homes in a very small, narrow street, and it's creating quite the problem. And people who are trying to get past a certain area, they are unable to see past and around the corner, and they have witnessed near-miss accidents in those areas. And I'm pretty sure that it would be something that's more of a code enforcement issue. And so I'll share that with you afterwards, that they would have been here and they preferred to stay anonymous because they were a little concerned as to how it would be taken. I'll share that with you afterwards, and I do have pictures as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward for the public comment? Or online, you're welcome to come off mute. Counsel, just so you know, Jeremy Cook is attending online, and if you want to ask him any question, you certainly could. All right. Okay, it looks like we'll close the Public Comments Section for tonight's meeting and move on to the General Business Items. The first general business item is the Wasatch County Wildfire Outlook, and we have several here from our Fire Department, where you're welcome all to come forward. It looked like Troy Morgan was on the agenda, but any of you are welcome to come forward. We're always happy to see our great fire district here. Thank you, Chief Hales, for coming also. Thank you.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thanks for having us tonight. My name is Troy Morgan, I am the Wasatch County Fire Warden. I work with the State of Utah Division of Natural Resources, Forestry, Fire, State Lands, as well as with Wasatch Fire District. I just wanted to come and give you guys a brief outlook on what our wildfire season's going to look like this year. As you know, we've had a couple good snow years over the last few years, which is great for snowpack fuel moistures. But on the flip side of that, it gives us a lot of growth in our grasses and our finer fuel crops. So just a basic outlook of what you can expect this year is, typically, the next three months from June through September, we're going to have a little warmer, drier conditions than normal, which means for us, one, we could have a few little firework starts, you know, just in the lower elevation areas, as well as once the monsoons come in July, depending on what type of moisture we get with the monsoons. Last year was a good monsoon year, we had a lot of thunderstorms, produced a lot of lightning, but behind the lightning came a lot of moisture. This year, we're kind of moving into what they call a neutral pattern. It's not an El Nino, El Nino pattern, it's kind of following a neutral pattern. And with that, what they're expecting is a little bit less or no monsunal moisture coming through the area. So, but weather changes, and obviously, you know, it's not something that we're guaranteed not to have, but the way the models are lining up, we could have less of a monsoon this year, which could create more of a drying trend, more lightning starts, and we could have possibly more fires around August, September within Wasatch County, so. I was talking with Chief Hales today, and I don't see a need to go into any firework restrictions other than in our typical areas in the urban interface, our mountainous areas. We obviously don't want people lighting off fireworks there, but I think we're still going to be good as far as 4th of July and 24th, as far as fireworks go.
It's fun to see the figure five showing us out of drought.
Yeah, that's great. So it is good. We were watching the predictive service, and it's interesting, the charts go every couple years when you're out of a drought, then it starts to climb back into a drought, three, four years, and then a couple years out. So it's actually, it's a pretty interesting trend. But, yes.
Do you know of any controlled burns that the Forest Service might be doing in the forest areas?
Yeah, so they're doing one right now on Highway 150, which is above Camas. It's called the Ponderosa RX burn. They've been working on that all week, actually been putting up quite a bit of smoke and fire, getting a lot of acres treated. Also, within Wasatch County, they have two prescribed fires that they're going to look to implement this year. One is the North Fork, which is above Lake Creek, North Fork of the Duchesne, and the other one is called Race Track, and it's out by Current Creek Reservoir. So possibly, depending on what the weather does, we could see quite a bit of controlled burns in the county.
Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you.
Officer Morgan?
I'd like to thank Public Works myself, because as a citizen of Heber City, I do appreciate their tireless efforts and everything they do for us as far as snow removal and all the other stuff. So it's awesome to see them get that award.
It is, they deserve it, and so do you. I'm sure that we'd love to have you back again, and we appreciate any communication that you can give to us or to the chief on any emergencies and such that might arise.
Perfect, yep, happy to come anytime you need me to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chief, also. All right, that's good to know, with the 4th of July coming. We will now go into the second item, which is a Yopify presentation with Russ Funk. It's a new project and utility notification system. Russ, we'll turn that over to you, please.
Okay, can you hear, is that on? Probably on for the online. Yeah, you hear it?
There you go.
So I'm going to sit over here so I can pull a few things up on the screen, if that's okay.
Yes.
Really, this item is just meant to provide an update back to council. One of the priorities mentioned by the council in their annual retreat this year was to provide better communication to the public. We've got a lot of projects going on, many of them are very disruptive, so the council had mentioned a desire to, by the way, share more information with the public, be more, be more in depth, and open with impacts and road closures and all those things in engineering. And our SWAT office is also looking to that some of the areas that we wanted to. So we've been looking into ways to do that. So this really is just to report back on some of the tools that we have found and implemented, and this is bigger, much bigger than a page. There's been a lot of people that have been involved, and it's really been involved. We've had Public Works looking at ways to communicate and help council in this area of crisis. And something I really have a lot to do with, just to change the website in general. So I'm going to talk about those things. I think to give you a little bit of background, just to maybe make a little bit more sense of this. Starting in 2019... Cut down the right... Here we go. So back in 2019, state legislature started making some changes regarding secondary water, these changes were all targeting water conservation. And one of the rule changes they made was requiring all secondary water connections to be metered. Then they came out and offered some funding assistance to communities to implement those procedures. Through that, the city was able to get a $5 million grant, and they gave us under $2 million, 1% interest loan, which is huge in today's market. It helps fund a metering project, which we're doing.
They also came out with House Bill 242, which had requirements for education, letting people know how much water they're using, what we can do to conserve. And so this company called Yopify also applied, or went to the state, and applied for funding, or grant funding through the state to help with that education requirement. They were awarded, I don't know the exact amount of the award, but basically, the award was a grant to work with communities who had already received the meter funding to try to meet this education requirement. So that's how we kind of got introduced to them as a company, is they felt like they had a good solution to help with that education requirement. So what I wanted to show you here was just part of the Yopify proposal. What Yopify is, is a software that allows us to send out messaging and alerts to the community. This is, you can look at the whole proposal in your packet, but basically, it's a way for us to send text messages, emails, we can send voice messaging calls, and even mailers to those that we don't have their contact information to get a message out to the public. It's really set up for governments to share information about water conservation. We're going to use it for information about construction projects, updates, road closures. We're going to send notifications out through this system to help keep the public informed. Their contract with us is for consulting and analytic services to help us understand how to use their data to educate the public. We can actually send out specific water use information to people who sign up for Yopify notifications. And one thing, like Mindy will use this for...
Shut off notices if somebody's behind our page, and she can use this and then say, hey, maybe there's a way to get it shut off, or whatever our policy is on that's noticing. So it's really a, it's really a pretty well-suited application for what we're trying to do. So... In addition to that, I do, I wanted, so I wanted to give kind of a little demonstration of our website and kind of show you the Yopify platform as well. Let me just start with our website. As you know, the website has been updated. This wasn't meant to be a presentation on the website. There's probably, maybe there's coming at some point, I don't know, but I just wanted to show you some of the things that we put on the website. By the way, this splash screen comes up first login to our website. It allows you to, right here, select that you want to sign up for these important notifications. And you can, once you've done that, you can get your splash screen. But under Departments, you can go under Engineering, and there's Construction Projects link. There's also just, under Departments, there's Construction Projects over here. And it takes you to this Construction Project page. We don't have all of the projects that are active going right now, but we're working on making these updates. But I was wondering what's going on with this certain project that you're coming here. You'll have links to these major projects. We're not going to have every single project on here, but major projects. People are wondering what's going on in the city. We're going to have this information. So we've got one for central Heber waters who are replaced, and that actually just contains a link to take you to the main website for that. But here we have our 2024 Roadmakers Project. You can come in here, and there's a description of the work that's going to happen this year. There's a map of the roads that are going to be chip sealed and treated this year, and it kind of lets the public know what to expect. So if you want to get that information out there, try to be, that's what we're going to get about the projects that we have. On that main page, we also have some information about this new communication tool, this Yopify tool. This section right here, you can come in and add or update your contact information. So you can choose how you want to receive the information, put mobile number, email, those things. We have quite a bit of information available to us to begin with from our utility accounts. That's kind of the information that we start with through our building software. And then from there, people can either opt out or opt in to additional communication. But on this homepage, and what this note is, actually, it's the Yopify one though, embedded in the website here, which you can post. Notices about projects here as well, so you can log into Yopify and see those notifications there as well. What I really want to show you is...
I have a quick question, Russ. Is this why I got a notice saying there was a dumpster at the park, at Jordan Park? Is that the same system, or is it different?
So we've had for a while a permanent system, that's another system that's an modification system. I think the notification you got was actually from Public Works to our board system. system. Public Works did this. Is everybody gonna use the new system? Well, Public Works will use it. Engineering will use it. Mindy will use it. One thing we want to do and be careful of is, the city actually has another thing you can sign up for or notifications about events and calendaring items and things like that. I don't wanna confuse this with those kind of events, because this is really meant to provide information that people need to know. If they want those other things, they can sign up for them, but we don't wanna overload them with calendaring events or notifications about, for example, the rededication of the city we've built. We could use it for that, but the intent in my mind for this is that we want to keep it for, we don't want people to get worn out with messaging and opt out of messages because we're sharing too much. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
Will there be two systems ongoing, or no?
Yes. There will be two systems ongoing. This Yopify is meant to replace that parlent system that you might have gotten that.
Okay.
But moving forward, in my mind, this would be set up to provide project and outage-type notifications. The other calendaring things you can sign up for to get notified is something that's. The calendaring notification system is a parlent system.
Thank you. Yeah. Yes. That was very cool, though.
Russ, quick question. So, and you might get there through the proposal, but there's a note in here that there's a grant funding to cover implementation, consulting, and services for the first three years. Do they have an estimate that they can share now of what it would look like going forward after that? And the context of that question is, anytime we spend time integrating, especially where there's, it looks like, quite a few hours of staff time in kind, $12,000 of staff time to integrate and to understand and whatnot, do we, I wanna get a good idea of what we're signing up for in the future if we stick with this system, and how, you know, that might be wasted if we don't. So, if you've got that, that they have already shared, I'd love to see that. If you don't, and we're gonna ask that for them, I'd love to maybe set a reminder for a year from now, after we've used it for a year, to see if we can get well ahead of cost increases and try to lock in costs before we come up at the end of a contract, because this company is gonna run out of, when they run out of grant, they're gonna have a bunch of municipalities all at the same time, and that would be really smart of them to raise the rates significantly at that point. I'd love to get ahead of that.
We did have a conversation about it, but to be honest with you, they did estimate that it would be lower the first three years to per year, but they were hesitant to commit anything until they see how we're using the system. The number of mailers we send out for impact to the city. So, that's the information that I have. That is something to understand, is that it is free to us for two, first three years. They'll have to continue using it after that. We won't see how well these are using. We'll have to convince.
I've just logged in here to the Yopify dashboard. This, just real quick, kind of gives you quickly the amount of contacts that we have within our Heber City boundary. SMS, 58% of coverage, email, 64. These are the accounts in the system as well. SMS and email, 73, so that goes up. Phone calls, we have a landline or a number that we can't text, 84%. And if you combine all those together, we're almost 90% reach on the system right now. In addition to that, I can just back up here for a minute. We have, we are kind of going through a campaign to try to get people to sign up for this. This is a little bookmark mailer that was put together that went out this month with the newsletter. And so, we're asking people, telling people, we want to communicate with you. We want to keep you up to date on these projects. So, this is, it's got a little QR code for them to grab with their phone. It'll take them right to that place where they can log in. So, we're asking people to put your contact information in here. We want to keep you up to date. If you don't want to, you don't have to, but we're going through a little campaign to do this. It also has been sent out through social media as well to ask for contact information. So, that's a little side note. We'd like to get as many people on here as we can.
Russ, do you have a total, even though this is new, of how many people have signed up already?
So, what we have right now is the percentage of addresses within the city boundary that we have contact information for. And that's what's shown right here. We have almost 90%.
That's amazing, but they didn't sign up? Or is it, were we able to transfer the sign-up from the parlent into this system?
Transfer from our billing software into the system.
Oh, okay.
Now, they don't want it for, provide more information.
Okay, so we've already entered 89% of our billing customers into the system, and we will be sending out alerts to them, but we're also asking them to sign up on their own? Is that right? Update their contact information? Okay. Thank you.
So, just a quick demonstration. You can send individual messages. Post bulletins. In fact, that's what those other announcements on there were, posted bulletins for some of these projects to get information out there. But what's really exciting to me about this is this broadcast section. And we can send messages, we can broadcast messages out to public. For example, we just passed, we did broadcast section. We just sent out a broadcast about our secondary metering project. So, we can go in and see the history here. Send out different messages based on what it is we're doing. If we send them a text or email, again, they can choose how they'd like to receive it. But the text message was a lot shorter. Kind of told them about, a little bit about the project, and referred to a link. Email was quite a bit more information. This is actually the same information that we get if they click on the link from the text, take it from the website, all this information. So, significantly more information there. But we have here the results from that broadcast as well, about how many, the percentage of our contacts that were reached on this message. I knew this as well. I don't know all the ins and outs. I'm just excited to show you that we're guiding through. 70% reached that message, reached 70% of our contacts. So, I could go in here and, let's see, I could create a new broadcast. Like, one of the things that we're excited about is we can meet with our contractors, for example, the pressurized irrigation contract, meter replacement contract. And we can meet with the contractor, and he can say, okay, next week, I'm going to be working in this area right here. We can come in and.
That's so cool.
I'm gonna publish this next week. You can choose that area, add it to the contact list. So, it puts all those contacts in the system, and then you forward with, how do you want to let these guys know? You can set the priorities. If you want to do text first, if they don't allow text, you want to go to email. They don't allow email. So, you can kind of prioritize how you want to do that. And then, you know, so, I didn't actually intend on sending it. I just wanted to show that we can really work with our contractor, and I'm sure where they're gonna be sending notices out, and try to keep people updated there. So.
Russ, not to interrupt your flow, but we've, at least I've noticed from the different complaints that I've received, when you're sending out these notifications, people really like to know start and end dates. I know it's always hard to give the end dates, but you could always say, our goal of the end date is this time. You see what I mean? They don't like things to just drag on and on and on, even though it can happen, and there's always good reasons for that, but you can certainly send out another broadcast, right, if there's delays.
We do want to be careful. We don't want to overpromise. We want to be careful with it. It's because we share information. One of the things that's really challenging with construction is, it does change.
It does.
It's based on material supply, equipment. Anyway, I think this is a good step in the right direction. There's not really any action that's needed. I just wanted to show you that we are taking some steps, taking some steps here to try to improve our communication with public, and decide about what we want to do.
On the mayor's comment, I would set the date 30 days after you think it's gonna be done, so you're always under, or overpromising and, I mean, underpromising and overdelivering. Yeah. Sitting out on us, hey, your project's done two weeks early.
That's what it is. If there's no more questions, I would be happy.
Thank you, Russ. Thank you very much. Any other questions, anyone?
I mean, just noticing from those numbers, 89% of people didn't require a mailer, right? We had a phone or an email or a text. So, with that in mind, when we talk about the contract with them, maybe we can pull out mailers are part of the costing. That might be a way to say, give us a lower every day, and then if we use the mailers, we'll pay an extra or overage or whatever it is. But I know we're not there yet. I'm just saying. I work with a lot of companies like that, that, for different services that I use, that third year, or that, you know, the first period when it is renewing is awfully exciting sometimes.
Well, something to keep in mind is, and I was talking with Mindy today about this exact thing, but prior to 2000, 2000 or 2002, when they were, when you were applying for, signing up for wires, they didn't ask, part of the application didn't have phone numbers or email addresses on it. So, we don't have, there's some people we just don't have that info. So, that's, so they're trying to do their best to update it anytime they're talking with a customer.
And we have a lot of Heber City residents that aren't customers of the city. They don't get a bill. Like, I don't get a city bill, because I'm in Twin Creeks.
That's a good point.
So, I, you don't have, probably don't have my information based on a bill, because I don't receive one. That might be the difference between how many, what percentage of residents that we have information. I'll sign up. Yeah. And I'll spread the word.
Maybe, maybe that's a really good point to consider, if they're not getting the newsletter, right? All they have is the website. So, maybe we're going to have to do a targeted mailing for people in Twin Creeks or NVSSD.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You did, that was an option. Now, we want to create something.
Yeah.
Format it.
Well, they can get expensive, too.
So, there's so many included with our three-year contract that we can do, and it's not how they have to do. We want to be careful, but absolutely, that's a good idea.
I hadn't either, so that's a very good idea. Okay. Anything else, counsel?
Oh, great job.
All right. Let's go on then. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Russ. Our next agenda item is the fraud risk assessment given by Sarah Nagel, our finance manager.
It is the end of the year, which means we get to do all of our year-end reporting and compliance. This will look familiar to all, but maybe Erin, and if Sid was here. This is our fraud risk assessment. About four years ago, the state auditor's office implemented a new requirement for all municipalities to do an internal assessment of their fraud risk. This assessment, it does need to be reported to the state, but really, nothing happens with it. There's, there's, there's no decision by the state. Like, the state takes no action on our score. It is really a tool to internally look at what we're doing and to make improvements. Heber City has a really great score. It had a great score before I even got here because of one major thing that you all decided to do, is create an audit committee. And I just want to applaud you for doing that. The audit committee is, and Erin is on our committee. It is, it's growing and it's functioning well. It's like, it's really picking up steam, and we've got really great members that are committed and engaged and qualified. I just wanted to give you props for, to taking that leap and doing that work, because for a city our size, you could easily just say, we're too small, but we didn't do that. So, our score, I don't believe our score has changed, and in fact, it hasn't. It's 365, which puts us in the very low. We cannot get any, we can't get into a different category. We, there, it's not, our risk is not zero, nor will it ever be. You cannot put your risk at zero, but you can try to mitigate it at best you can. We are doing that. And, yeah, so, props to you all. That is, but that's all that we need to do. I just need to report it to you, and that box is checked.
Well, Sarah, I think there's an easy way to get that. Five more points on reporting fraud and abuse. Heber Light and Power uses a system called Lighthouse, where we can post it around the different city buildings. Matt, you're probably familiar with it, where any employee could report personnel fraud, you know, other types of abuse. It comes directly to, you know, whoever is designated to. It could come to me. It could come to the entire city council. You see what I mean? So, that it skips the administrative chain. I think that would be an easy way for us to get that. Five more points. It's an easy lift. It's not so easy to do the internal audit. I'm not sure when that step will come.
Yeah, that is kind of a big leap, or I don't think we're anywhere close to having an internal audit function. So, I know Lighthouse well. I actually implemented Lighthouse at my, in my previous entity. And I want to clarify, so that 5%, we actually do have points for having a fraud number promoted. So, we are already doing that. We just don't have a written policy on it. So, that's what we're, that's what we'll work on. So, we already have a number. It's already promoted on our website. That's what we get credit for. We just need a written policy to maybe flesh out.
Well, that, is that something that the Personnel Committee can do? Or is it something that you and Matt need to do?
It's an internal policy.
Do you think you could perhaps do one in six months? Do, is that something we need to pass?
I think our goal is, next time we meet with you on this fraud risk assessment, that we have that lot checked and have that policy in place.
So, by next year, then?
We've implemented a lot of things this year, so we're gonna take.
Keep going.
And we'll jump on the fraud policy.
That'd be great. Counsel, counsel, any other questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you very much, Sarah. Sarah, you stay put. You, you are here for our next several items. Thank you. So, the next general business item is the updated fiscal year 2025 tentative budget. And I'll turn that back to you, Sarah.
So, this is just, so this is, this is just the, kind of the updated tentative budget. We met on May 7th. You gave us a lot of great feedback. We have pushed through all of the changes. Here are just a summary of the changes that we've made. And this is, you know, the budget is a really iterative process. So, this is, we just want to be really transparent and communicate as the best we can. So, in this new tentative budget, and I want to make it clear, we're not, we don't need to approve this budget. That all comes in August, because we are going through truth and taxation. We just wanted to provide the citizens, provide you all with the latest and greatest budget. So, we did add the $278,000, which we anticipate being the additional revenue after truth and taxation. We decided to table any business license fee changes. So, I had. So I had added some additional revenue in anticipation of those going through. We removed that revenue. We did push forward all the utility rate adjustments. We did increase the four-year portion of the HSA contribution, meaning those higher rates thresholds. Thirty-two hundred four thousand. And then we did- Create a budget for a point seven percent subsidy for the tier-two employees. So you can look at that. I put an updated budget. That's it, really, just to show you what our efficiency was changing. If you had any further comments and further questions, that's all for this item.
Okay. Any comments, any questions, counsel? We will be having a public hearing on this, right, next? I have a few questions since I'm not seeing any. It looks like that on page ninety-six, the Stormwater Capital Fund number sixty-eight, it shows a projected deficit.
Yeah, it does it have, and we could actually-
Yeah, we can go there. I'm just concerned about us approving a projected deficit.
This new software, or do you see it in front of you now? Or I could try to pull it up.
It's under the tentative budget down on page ninety-six.
It doesn't have a great way of showing the use of fund balance. So if you see that the income is negative, then look at the fund balance. If the fund balance is still positive, that is a good indication that we're just using up fund balance to get the budget to balance. It just, I haven't figured out a good way to reflect that in the software. I've reached out to ClearGov. They don't really have a great solution yet. So some, some budgets, some funds may show expenditures over revenues, but just know that we're using fund balance to-
Okay, so it's showing, well, it's showing a projected deficit for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, actually, not twenty twenty-five. And that's where I was concerned, that's all. Because the beginning fund balance wouldn't be the positive eleven thousand, it would be the negative, right? Which would then put us into an ending fund balance. Next year is negative too. That's on page ninety-six. At least that's my guesstimation. And, you know, this is not the millions, thankfully. This is a smaller account. But I was still concerned about that showing. Ninety-six Stormwater Capital Fund, there you go. So you can see it's negative on projected twenty twenty-four. But then the beginning fund balance shows positive, right? And that's where I think it gets a little bit messed up.
Yeah, I'll look into, that's a good catch. I'll look into that and see what's going on with the math there.
Can you answer one more question for me? Back on page forty-five, please. I want to make sure I'm there on the same page. I know. This, at least it's scrolling pretty fast. So this is the Airport Capital Fund? Oh, you know where I'm going, I guess, huh?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I'm trying to figure out the six hundred and ten. So this is a little bit further down. It's not on page forty-six. It's, maybe it's on, it's on the contributions. There we go. So it's on page forty-six, yes, forty-six. And it's the six hundred and ten thousand dollar in this year, fiscal year, contributions from other funds. I just didn't know what those other funds were, please.
I don't know why the naming convention, it's only from the operating fund. Those, those are the only contributions you'll see to the capital would be-
So it's coming from the-
Twenty-one to forty-one, so the airport-
Yeah, from the airport. Okay. We're really trying, again, I, I had to ask because we're really promising that the airport's going to be self-sustaining, right?
I think there's a time, at some point in my life, I'll scrub all the names to like, make them clear. And I don't understand the naming convention right there, but it is from the airport to the airport-
Airport to the airport.
In fact, I want to, that's a good question, unless you have other questions.
Well, it kind of ties into, if we just go back up to page forty-five. See, we had a negative budget for this year in the capital fund that turned out worse this year on the fund balance. I'm not, well, maybe not. No, I'm just saying, we were able to not be negative. How did we do that?
You might remember, we did have a finding for this in our audit last year. There was, we just ended with a negative fund balance. And so by code, by law, I don't, we're, we have to, we have to transfer enough money to, to reduce that negative fund balance. And that's why there's a, a budgeted transfer from the operating. And we had some outstanding grants that we actually received. So the operating fund is in a much better position to, to transfer those funds over to the capital now.
Okay.
We had some hiccups, a little over there with some grant funding that was owed to us that was out there. We just had to do the work to get the-
Oh, okay. Okay.
Operating fund is in a much better position.
And then I don't know if you know, but maybe our airport committee member or Matt, you know, when is the, when are those airport fees kicking in?
We're going to discuss them next week.
Yeah, so the Airport of Ivory Board has a meeting on June thirteenth. It'll be dedicated to reviewing the airport fees and rates. I expect that after that meeting, it'll be coming to you for consideration.
Okay, and that's landing fees? Did they do taxi fees?
It's considering every, every fee the airport could possibly charge and others that we've not charged in the past. So includes landing fees, fuel, voyage fees.
What about the, oh, we can't do the transfer fee though, because that's in the contract.
We have, actually, we have a policy now for the transfer fee at one percent. So that's in place.
No, I have three percent.
Three percent. Thank you. It's three percent.
I put that in. That's why I remember, because they only wanted one percent. I said, no, we're going three percent. And so, you know, it was negotiation. But I'm, you know, I don't know if that's something we could consider for the private lease contracts, you know, leases in the future, to maybe think about that. That's been a really good, it's been a help to our airport fund, those transfer fees.
No question. And the other reason why the Airport Operating Fund is in good shape is, recall, we told you that we assumed that you adopted many of the fees recommendations and we included those revenue estimates in that budget. So if you adopt a different set of airport fees and rents, we'll have to adjust those revenues.
Okay, well, thank you for answering my picky questions on that. There was one more that I worried about, a percentage increase-decrease. But I, I'll just send that to you. It was just on one page. It just seemed that the percentage was off and I wasn't sure how it was calculated, but it's not that I'm questioning the numbers.
Oh, I appreciate any feedback. If you catch weird, not being the look strange or like, big variants that you don't understand. I am-
Well, I, I really have to. Well, it, it means a lot to me to know that our city budget's able to hold the line even with the tremendous inflation that we've had. And, you know, granted, we're spending a lot on parks. We had to save up quite a bit to do that. We saved up quite a bit to work with the cemetery and other really big-ticket items that are really going to help our city and do things that we needed to do. And so it's really great to see how being able to put away that surplus and now being able to use it for really wonderful things for our city as well as, you know, keep that same budget, right? Even in today's economic times, I'm really happy about that.
And I, I maybe I've said this before, but this has been a group effort, like all the managers, all the department heads, did, made some really tough decisions. We, we gave them some pretty tight constraints. And they all met them and we, we feel really good about the, the quality of the-
And then do you think, when you bring back the consolidated fee schedule, which I didn't announce, sorry, everyone, there's going to be a separate public hearing in our next meeting on June eighteenth for the consolidated fee schedule? I know you just sent out that information to the department heads to review the fees. Any inklings of what we might see in two weeks?
Well, the biggest change is the water, the reallocation of the water utility rates. But I don't think, maybe there's some, like cleanup work, like I mean, maybe engineering had some fees that were on there that they don't need to be on there anymore, but no other large-
Okay. Okay. And just so everyone knows, we have a truth and taxation hearing on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And let's see, that, that was the other announcements that I wanted to make. And I might make that again, but it's coming up next.
Go back to your question about the transfers. So this is gonna be a new report that we add. I think we're required to like, show you like, a very clear transfer schedule. And so you can see clearly here that the only thing going between the airport is, you know, two hundred and five dollars. So if, if the names are confusing, if the overall budget report is confusing for transfers, this should be very clear and your transfers should balance at the end. Every, you know, you should see coming in, going out, should balance. So that might, that might help you understand those transfers that we see. Okay.
Okay, if there's not any other questions, we're going to move into the action items, counsel? Okay, thank you very much, Sarah. Stay put. Everyone, the action items are the items where we'll hold public hearings. The counsel can discuss, table, continue or approve items. In the action items, public comment can be taken except if a counsel, that the counsel makes a motion to cut off discussion and to potentially vote. Except for the three public hearings that we're having tonight. And public hearings means that the public can talk as long as they want to. So the first action item is a public hearing on unbilled services, city unbilled services for culinary water, sewer water, storm water and the pressurized irrigation funds, meaning the city's not going to charge itself for its own use of city water, sewer, storm water and pressurized irrigation. Sarah, we'll turn that back over to you for the public hearing and then open it up for public comment.
You were check, box checking, the state code, the state does require that we have a public hearing and get your approval to continue the practice of providing unbilled water services to the, to the general fund. I will say there's, it's, there's two good reasons to continue this. One, the, the water funds are self-sustaining. They don't need the general funds to balance their budgets. And then it allows the general fund to maintain those revenues for other things like parks and infrastructure payroll. So if you're looking for good reason to continue the practice, those are two. We've been doing this since at least twenty seventeen. That was the earliest. And we may have been doing it for many, many years before that.
Yes.
We're just here asking you to approve continuing the practice and the whole public.
Okay, so counsel, I'm going to open this up for the public. Anyone who's listening, there's a total of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars that the city does not charge itself for water, sewer, storm water and pressurized irrigation that the city buildings use. I'd like to open it up for the public hearing now. Anyone's welcome to come forward. Try to keep your comments to three minutes apiece. And please tell us your name. If you're online and want to speak in this public hearing, just come off mute and I'll call on you. The public hearing section is now open. Okay, it looks like everyone's satisfied that the city is doing that. So I'm going to turn it back to the counsel now. There is a, in the staff report and the request for the counsel to make a vote to continue the practice of providing unbilled utility services in the city and not pay that out of the general fund.
So moved.
Okay, so that's from Scott Phillips to continue this, Trina. The practice of unbilled city utility services. Is there a second?
I have a second. It was described.
Thank you, Erin. I didn't mean to look at you to make you do that. Okay, and then further discussion. All right, let's take a vote on it, starting on this end.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes four to zero. We're going to move on to the next public hearing, please. This is a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five tentative budget that we just discussed. Sarah, I'm going to turn this back over to you. But as far as this public hearing, Sarah, we are not taking a vote on it at this time, or are we?
We are not. And honestly, I've, I've gone, I've consulted with Jeremy. When you do truth and taxation, it kind of puts you on a whole different path for public hearings and approvals and resolutions. It's, I don't believe we actually are required to hold this public hearing because we will have one dedicated to truth and taxation and adopting the budget. But we thought it would be a good idea, since this has been an iterative process, since we did kind of update the tentative budget, that we would give the public an opportunity to give feedback throughout the process. So do we need it? I don't know. But does it hurt to have one? Certainly not. So we can go ahead and have it, but there's no action on your part tonight.
Okay, so just again, to reiterate, everyone, that truth and taxation hearing for a property tax increase of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars total is likely on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. There is a proposed utility rate adjustments or increases, I'm assuming, starting July first, twenty twenty-four. There's also an increase in employee HSA contributions that you'll discuss, Sarah, as well as others. And then we will have in two weeks, the consolidated fee schedule hearing on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. So Sarah, back to you, please.
Nothing more to add. I don't, it has already been said in the actual presentation earlier, so-
Mayor, I just have one clarification. The utility rates will become effective August first.
Is that a hearing or is that the actual increases?
That's the increase, expectation date is August first.
August first. Okay, so any utility increases would start in August first, not July first?
Yeah, let me clarify. They are going to increase because that's already been approved. We already have baked in increases for several years. This, this just changes the application of the general fund.
Is there any way you could just do a really brief overview, perhaps, on those first pages of the budget before we take the public comment, where we're just going to look at the total revenues and the total expenditures and, you know, show that we're really trying to keep our budget tight? Is there any, we could just briefly discuss that before the public hearing?
This little graph does not have, which is easy to add, is a citywide total. I can, I-
Yeah, just like-
Do you by the general?
That's fine. That's fine. Let's start right there. The general fund.
But this shows you, and I think people are mostly concerned with the general fund. By code, we need to balance our budgets. So you'll see here that this is our total projected revenues, budgeted revenues, fifteen point six. And hopefully, if I did my math right, the, the revenue should be, or expenses should be less than that, and it is a bit less. And you can see in this graph where those funds are, how they're allocated. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes. Yes. And you can see, everyone, our police department is forty percent of our budget. Then comes roads, building, administration, our parks, our planning. Many of the fees of planning, engineering and building are paid for by the developers who use their services. Not all, but most of that. And then the enterprise funds for the water, the sewer, the storm water and the pressurized irrigation are not included on this chart because they are separate, self-sustaining enterprise funds. And they have their own rates and they have their own budgets, and that's included further down in the budget. Okay, is there anything else that the counsel thinks is important before we open the public hearing? Okay, Sarah, anything else before we open the public hearing? And we're not taking a vote. This is just to get public feedback. Okay, thank you very much. So now I'll open up the next public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five tentative budget as it's been presented in the agenda. Anyone's welcome to come forward and give a comment, state your name. You've got three minutes or so. If you want to come off mute online, just come off mute and I'll call on you. Public hearing is now open. Jeremy Cook, you are off mute. Does that mean you want to give a comment?
No, no, mayor. Sorry, I was just preparing in case anybody had questions.
Thank you, Jeremy. Glad that you can speak and talk with us and be here with us. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 tentative budget. Thank you very much, everyone. Now we're going to go to the third public hearing scheduled for tonight.
I noticed that you were making a point of announcing public hearings. In addition, on June 18th, we'll have one for our final budget amendment.
Okay, oh, for fiscal year 2024? That's great. So next week, June, I'm sorry, next time, June 18th, 2024, we will have a final. Do we need a public hearing for that final budget amendment? Okay, so then two public hearings on June 18th. One for the consolidated fee schedule and the other for a budget amendment to close out fiscal year 2024 on our budget. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate all of your hard work to get that ready for us, you and all of the department heads and Matt. We're going to the third agenda item, everyone. This is a new state government requirement. It's a public hearing for Utah Code annotated 10-3-1818. I'm sorry, 818 about salaries in municipalities. Counsel, you have ordinance 202412 to consider with this public hearing. We're going to turn this over to Sri Ash, our human resources director. Thank you, Sri.
This is part of Senate Bill 91. The mayor said part of the Utah Code now. We are required to declare increases and allowances.
There we go. Thank you.
So as far as budgeted bonuses or incentive pay or increase in rates of pay, we've budgeted the potential as well. Annual performance appraisals can, that actually says 3.5, it's actually 3%. That that's merit based potential. And the executive municipal officers, these are all of the titles that we're required to declare. So if if we were to receive the 3.2%, which is linked to the CPI, the gross payroll would increase to $12,094 a month. And here is my other attachment.
I think we can get an annual bonus because they're already at the top. So this is where we're standing right now. This is just base rate. It's not including benefits.
If if you could also scroll down. Oh, wait, does anybody have questions on this?
Quick clarification, just because for the record, whatever. When when you were just looking at 3.2% of gross payroll is $12,094, you said per month for the payroll, that's the increase per month. I just want to make sure we're clear that that's the actual increase, not the total. Right. I realize that's obvious, but just to clarify that.
I guess 12,000 would be too inexpensive, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
The vehicle allowances are actually quite minimal. We have our city engineer and staff engineers receive a vehicle allowance monthly. Also, our city manager receives a vehicle allowance and our city manager has a personal vehicle allowance. And those are the only individuals receiving. And like Sarah said, check the box. That's really especially what this is, but.
Okay, any questions, counsel? All right, anything else you'd like to say? Okay, I I'll open it up then for the public hearing, please. And so again, our third public hearing, anyone's welcome to come forward, give a comment, state your name. You're also welcome to come off mute online for the public hearing on salaries in our municipality. Okay, I will close the public hearing then for UCA 10-3-818 salaries in the municipality. And counsel, it's up to you now with any other comments or questions on ordinance 2024-12.
Question. Does the vehicle allowance include gas? That comes out of their vehicle allowance? Owning a vehicle, maintaining it? So gases, if they take a city vehicle or a city trip, the gas is compensated? No, their personal vehicle.
It depends. For example, in in my contract, I I get a vehicle allowance, but the expectation is I pay for the gas to run around on city business unless I'm driving further than Utah County or Salt Lake County. At that point, I can then submit for reimbursement of that gas mileage. So there's expectation that in the area, in the region, the employee would pick up that that gas mileage.
Okay, I think $500 is not enough, then. That's that is too minimal. If I was using my vehicle as a city engineer or a city manager and driving around, I'd be spending 500 bucks a month in gas. 1,200 a month, probably. So that's my, I'm just going to point that out. Maybe we can discuss that at some point.
Can city like the city manager fill up at the city at the, I don't know, I see everybody filling up at that gas tank.
No, the expectation, the expectation, if you're getting a car allowance, you're paying for your own fuel to run city business.
Since the budget is already tentatively approved at this point, does the council want to come back with that in the next fiscal year budget? Or are you looking at a budget amendment already for fiscal year 2025?
I would I would add, because you've not adopted, formally adopted the tenant budget, you could actually instruct staff to include that in there, bring it back in August as part of the budget package.
Is this something that the personnel committee could look at? Maybe do some comparisons with other cities.
But you can have as many iterations as you want of the tentative budget until you adopt it. We have to confirm that.
Well, we are Jeremy, I think Yvonne wants to ask you a question, please. Did you hear the conversation, Jeremy?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so is this something that we can adjust since we haven't had the final approval?
It's definitely something we can adjust. I think who, I can't remember who, Matt has a car allowance, someone, one other person has a car allowance, I believe. Is that correct?
On that, on that list, Matt Bower and me, the city engineer, have a car allowance. The others also have a car allowance, vehicle allowance for $500 as well. I don't know if there's anybody else.
Yeah, so so Matt has a specific contract, so we probably want to adjust Matt's contract just to clarify the gas, to make sure that it's absolutely clear. And then for Russ, he doesn't have a separate contract, so we could just include that in the budget.
We just put it into the budget, Jeremy, instead of having to redo Matt's contract just so that it applies to the city manager, it applies to city staff? Just applies to anyone that gets a vehicle allowance?
We could. I I mean, I I just want to be really clear so that we don't, you know, no one accuses Matt of taking advantage of gas, if that's what we want to amend it to be.
So you're saying keep Matt separate from from anything that we consider for the rest of staff?
I think we could amend the budget to include include that, the anticipated cost of gas for those two. Because I I totally agree. I don't think that's sufficient, but but I think we'd also probably want to, at some point, amend Matt's contract, just make it clear.
You're saying Matt has a separate contract, is a special contract. And city engineers and other employees are just based on standard. And I'm sorry to bring it up, but I do, you know, as we look at things, some things pop out at you and go, oh, that doesn't, I don't know. This has been discussed in 20 years? Probably not.
Go ahead, Russ.
Hey, hey, mayor, someone's speaking. We can't hear him online.
Oh, Russ, can you speak louder or you might need to go to the podium?
That's really what you have to do with this microphone. It's, these aren't great microphones. You have to put your mouth on the thing. So I apologize. Anyway, you know, you look at, you look at the increases in vehicle costs, insurance to insure your own vehicles, you look at fuel increases, just operation and maintenance on your vehicle. I I do feel that $500 a month is not adequate, and we have had conversations about it. I appreciate you bringing this up. It it can be looked at as a benefit to the employee, and it also can be looked at as a significant savings to the city. Because if the city is paying what it costs for a vehicle for people to drive around, so it needs to be a balance there. It should be fair both ways, and I agree. I don't think it is, and I appreciate you bringing it up and would appreciate you looking at it.
I'm wondering if it, this year, Sarah and Matt, if it could be considered being taken out of the Internal Service Fund? And then we figure out, hopefully, as budgets, you know, progress in future years. Maybe that's just a short term solution for this fiscal year. But in future fiscal years, maybe it can come out of the general fund. I I just know there's access there in the Internal Service Fund for this year's budget.
I have a question because the vehicle allowance is taxable income. Why do we not just provide a vehicle?
Because it's more expensive.
I I think it's more fair.
You can. And that's what I'm saying. It's, there's benefit to the city, it's savings to the city. There is, there is also benefit to the employee because you need a vehicle anyway. It's, it's just that it
Because after you pay tax on that 500, then you only have 350 left. That's way too low. I mean, we'd rather, as a, as a, as a city organization, I'd rather be providing a vehicle that we're paying for the tires, we're paying for the the car than providing an allowance. I mean, I mean, we may just want to consider that.
It's a policy position of the city. Some cities do provide the vehicle, other cities provide the allowance. It's really a policy decision. If council wanted to adjust the fiscal year 25 budget, you can do that before it's adopted in August. And we can assign, Sarah, the task of finding the the means of making that sure that budget continues to balance.
I think in this case, I, these these individuals that are, they are going out on projects often, but not primarily. And so I don't have interest, just for what it's worth, for the council, to provide a vehicle. If that's not their primary location, that's just, it happens. That's why allowances exist. That's, I mean, is the allowance correct in this dollar value? Probably not. But it's, that's why allowances exist when when your primary role isn't to be onsite, but you do go out onsite often. It's a recognition of that, and it offsets those costs. Something, just somebody keep me honest here. If an employee is required to go off to another location for their salaried work, they have the ability to to write that off at their taxes or to apply for a mileage reimbursement as part of their taxes. They get some kind of a tax credit on that. Am I correct in that? I don't, it's separate from a salary. It's just a matter of if your salaried job is to commute to and from City Hall, but in order to meet the needs of your job, you have to go onsite sometimes. If you track those miles and keep track of those miles, you can actually, as part of your your yearly taxes, you can put those those miles and you get the reimbursement, I think, at pretty high amount per mile.
I would say we don't give tax or legal advice, but it's possible.
I'm just curious, because I think if that's the case, then perhaps an HR or personnel conversation is to say, did you know that this is something you should be considering? Because they may not know that, and it might actually help their their finances.
There's a set rate.
I would like staff to come back with some recommendations on what seems reasonable. We know that $500, all of us agree, it's not reasonable. Now, we can all agree that $2,000 is not reasonable either. So there, I know it's in the middle. It's, it might be $1,000, it might be 800. There's, there's a cost of tires, there's a cost of all these things, and it should be borne proportionally. And you may know how many miles your staff drives or come up with an estimate. Engineers do that all the time. And bring it back to us soon as that that could help. But honestly, I don't think other communities look at it with data either. They just kind of, what does someone else do? I'd like to know what those costs are, and I think you two could weigh in. So that's what I'd prefer. And when you can, it's soon, before we get to the budget in August.
Okay, now, counsel, let's come back to ordinance 202412. Any further discussion on that? Or I'm not sure if there needs to be any amendment to it, given this recent discussion. What do you think, Sri? Okay, counsel, what about ordinance 202412?
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to accept ordinance 202412 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Aaron keeps beating you, Mike. Any further discussion? We'll do, take the vote, starting on this end.
Yes.
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 Okay, that passes four to zero. And again, Sid is excused. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the public hearings. Now we're to agenda item number four, update to the US 40 highway, or I should say Highway US 40 North Access Agreement with UDOT and Wasatch County. So Russ, back to you, please.
I'm going to come over here because this microphone works, so.
Thank you.
Purpose of this is to seek counsel approval regarding Amendment Four to the Access Agreement, Cooperative Access Agreement with UDOT and Wasatch County for US 40 North of Heber City. Just some background here. Wasatch County first entered into an agreement with UDOT, an access agreement, in 2008. Heber City, once we started having properties on the north side of town, considering annexation into Heber City, that's when we became a party of this, and we were amended into the agreement back in 2018. Since then, there've been a couple other addendums or amendments to the agreement. In 2023, when we finished the North Village Streets Master Plan, we updated the agreement to actually clarify the location for the same road that we're talking about in this current amendment. And then Amendment Three in 2023 as well clarified a discrepancy regarding the UDOT access management category between SR 32 and the northern boundary of Heber City. What those access management categories are, they define intersection spacing on a corridor as well as like what the typical max speed is that you see through that area. So the agreement said one thing, but in practice, they were, they were doing another thing. And so they meant they just clarified it through that addendum. While we were working or while we have been working with developers on preliminary designs to implement the master plan, we found that making the location that we had planned, so this this road is north of the college, north of the university up there. They have the existing paved access that's kind of directly west of the campus, and then it goes up and kind of swings around. This is, the proposed access is kind of a dirt road right now that's north of the campus. That's where we had planned it in the master plan. But again, in the designs, we found that we weren't able to tie into the road and get up over the bridge and stay under our design slope that we wanted to, which 10% is a max, ideal is more eight. And it didn't leave us any room for other roads to come off and provide access into the properties. And so the idea of changing that alignment came up, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna scroll. I'm sitting here moving my iPad and not realizing that I have not even on the right item yet, so. so this is the, this is the proposed amendment for, and what it does, there's a map here at the bottom. So this, this is kind of where the university is over here. There's an existing dirt road that runs kind of east to west. And this is where the original alignment was supposed to be. The idea of adding more length, so shifting that access further to the north adds more length so that we can keep the slope down. In addition, one of the requirements that we coordinated with UDOT when we did that master plan was that we wanted accesses to be 600 feet off of the US 40 intersection so that it doesn't turn into just a, a bunch of stacking and cars that can't get past each other and things like that here at the intersection. So doing that also provides better access into these, into these other properties up here, 600 feet down the road. In addition, there is another existing private access just opposite of this that goes into the equestrian facility. I don't know everything that's down there, but it, it also aligns it with that. And so I, after we met with the designers and kind of worked on this and came up with this idea, I forwarded this to UDOT and to Wasatch County and said, hey, this is an idea. It solves a lot of problems. Is this something that you guys would be open to? Uh, everybody said they were open to it, so they drafted this agreement. And that's really what the, the amendment is, is to move that location from here to here. Uh, also there's a couple of these notes on here. You can hardly see them. Maybe I can zoom in. Just got to figure out how, sorry.
Engineers can write so small.
Okay. Well, what you've got here, there's an existing retaining wall that runs along here. There's, there's a private access road that comes and runs behind that retaining wall and it provides access to like four or five houses right through here. So this relocation may require a reconstruction of part of that retaining wall right there so that we can make sure that we have site visibility for UDOT. And so there's a note on here that says if that's needed for site visibility, that would be taken care of by the developer here. And then the other thing is this private access road goes away on this side. And so the requirement would be that they, uh, this development provides through their local road system access for those homes. And then it would, they would end up tying back down to, um, highway 40 through the roadway system. And so that developer has agreed to those terms. And so that is the amendment before you. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have questions?
College Downs, this is College Downs.
Yeah, Finch Creek is on the north. College Downs is on the south.
Is this planned to be a lighted intersection?
It is.
That's perfect.
Yes, this will be a signalized.
That's better, way better.
Yeah, it's a better, it's a better solution. I think everybody agrees. It's better, so.
Can I just make a motion?
Can I ask a question? Russ, is, will the new road be replaced before the old road is removed? It doesn't say that in this agreement.
Well, the, the road to the college, the actual entrance to the college is actually down here. This is the paved access to the college now. This other proposed place where the, where the new road is just kind of a dirt access right now up through these.
I'm talking about that connection through Goldfinch. Okay. The connection to the old frontage road.
This road here?
Yeah. It, it's not saying in the agreement that the new road connection has to be made before the existing road is, you know, taken away. So can we put that into the agreement? I think that's really important for the people living there.
I think it would be, um, I think my, my opinion on that is it would be up to us to coordinate that with, with this developer as we get the plans and actual design done for this road that we provide a way for these guys to get through their property while the infrastructure is going in. Again, this agreement.
It is a no-brainer and we want to make sure there's no cost to, of course, the people on the existing road, but it's just not in the agreement. And that's why I think it might be hard for you to put some teeth into what you're trying to coordinate unless it is in the agreement.
I, it's actually what you're asking for is, is.
It's not in the MDA.
No, it will be us. It will be the city that that obligation falls on. And so you're asking for an additional obligation to put in here that we have to comply with when we already know we have to comply with it. UDOT has already agreed to this agreement. The Wasatch County has actually already approved it in their council. So we would be going back.
How do we make sure then that that happens so that those homeowners always have access and don't have to pay anything for the access?
Um, yeah. So again, understanding that that requirement is, is necessary as we approve the plans and as we approve construction, we need to make sure that those notes are on the plat and are on the plans to make that happen. Us putting, again, us putting it in the agreement isn't putting any condition on UDOT or Wasatch County. All it is, is saying this is something that, it's another condition that we have to comply with, which we already know. So I just, we can do that, mayor, if you want. We're just, we'll just be sending it back to Wasatch County and UDOT with the revised agreement with that condition. And I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but it's up to you.
I'm sure the other entities figured we would do that. I'm just saying now, how do we make sure we do it? You're saying a plat recording. How is it that you'll make sure that this happens?
I just, I just need to make sure on the construction drawings that there's a requirement to allow that local access through. And then on the plat, I have to make sure that this note, this tiny little skinny note up here that gives access to these property owners to go through this local road system is recorded on the plat.
Okay. So now one more question. Are those property owners annexed or not yet? I don't think they are.
So if you look on, if you look on the county map, um, there's like, I think there's like six parcels right there. Two of those parcels, maybe there's, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number. I don't know if there's six or seven, but the first two parcels actually fall within Finch Creek's boundary. The next one is one that asked for the annexation petition this morning. And then there's either three or four or more, no, the one that, yeah, I think it is Bush. It's the one that asked for it this morning. Do you? I wasn't up here. I, is it, is it still coming or it's next?
The Bush annexation?
Okay, so that's next. Sorry. I, I apologize. I was thinking it was earlier on the agenda and I wasn't in here, but. Um, so that one is asking for a annexation or, or just a petition at this point. And then the rest of them, I think if we provide an access through there, then they are left whole. So that's where it sits with all those existing property owners.
Let's be sure to talk about this in the lead meeting tomorrow as far as like snow removal. When you go from a, a city road, whether it's private or not, right? A city road to that county road, it looks like, connection.
This is private. This, this existing road back here is private.
So the county doesn't plow it either?
Not that I'm aware of. I think it's privately owned and maintained. This, this road will be private. It will be maintained by the HOA in the entity. But again, they will have legal access granted to them. So there'll be an access easement in favor of all of those individual lots. It'll be recorded on the plat and then this will be a city maintained collector road.
So I did just have a question on the Bush annexation and you alluded to it. Can I just ask it now, please? The Bush annexation does not have any city access at this point and it is on a private road, as I understand it. But I thought the private road was to the north, not this frontage road.
I don't believe they have any other access besides this frontage road. Now, right now, this frontage road ties into highway 40 right here and it ties into the north. I always forget the name of this other road. Molten Lane, ties in on Molten Lane. So they tie in, which, which also frankly, there's, it isn't. I, I don't think that that is actually a public road. I think it's a privately owned road is what I understand on that too. But I'm not aware of any other access that they have. The canal limits their access to the east. So my understanding is that's all the accesses that they currently have.
You're saying that this Finch Creek would provide access even to the Bush annexation? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All of those properties that, um, front onto that private road. Now, we may require them to extend that private road across their frontage where right now it's dirt. But if we annex them in, they'll probably have to approve and build a private road across their frontage. But their access will be through this private road onto the city road system.
Thank you. That clarifies quite a bit. All right, council, is there any other discussion or questions or motions on the update to the highway 40 management access agreement? Mike?
I think this is a really good idea. It solves a lot of problems and I'm glad we're going through this iterative process to figure out that, you know, exactly where things should go. So well done. I like it. I like the curviness. I do want to just make sure, I think we need to address that private road and make sure that, because UDOT wants to close Molten Lane too. That's supposed to, I mean, that's the long-term plan too. And so it's not just these four people, but it's Molten Lane. I think we need to sort of just address what is this connection? Because we want, we need to tie those people into a light, this light on the south and the next, there's one more light, right?
Intersection. The next one's not.
It's an intersection.
Yeah, it's going to, it's actually limited to a three-quarter intersection, the next, the next.
We need to tie this frontage road to that too at some point with, and that's coming in with future annexations though. Is it called crossings or something like that?
Yeah. So the, kind of the re, um, relocation of Molten Lane is in, is included in that crossing development. There is kind of a middle ground where the existing Molten Lane is. I don't actually know how that's going to be abandoned at this point. Right now they have a, a legal access tied into it. If that does go away, we'll have to figure out how to tie them in on that side. But I don't, I don't know how to do that right now without, that's not even in the city.
Well, here's my point. These properties in the county are high-density town center zoned. So they need to come into the city. We have a different zoning, but we also have a way to solve their problems. So I think if we can at least keep that in mind and address it, we owe them access. You know, the county, the city, UDOT owes them access. They have access now and you can't just remove it.
Right. So that's why, that's why this.
I think you're aware of it. I'm just sort of making the statement that we owe them valid access on both ends. And we owe, and so as, as we talk about Finch Creek, and as we talk about Gary Bush's request, he's the next property owner there with us. And then as we talk about crossings, we have to, and mayor just kind of said this, we need to make them whole, keep them whole. Yeah. So, so I like this. Like it's, I think it's a better plan than the, the first one. And, and I have some other ideas I'll share with you later, but right now we're just talking about the access agreement and I support that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions or motions on the highway management access agreement?
I move we accept the item as presented.
Your second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Aaron.
Okay, okay. Tag teaming. Uh, any further discussion? All right. We'll start on this end with a vote, please.
Yes.
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 That passes four to zero. Thank you. Ah, thank you, Russ. Okay. The next agenda item is the Bush annexation petition with Dina Woodbury, our planning consultant. Dina, come off mute and we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, mayor and council. The city has received a petition for the Bush annexation, which is located approximately 3490 north highway 40. The proposed annexation includes 1.863 acres. And the state code requires the municipalities to either accept or reject an annexation petition at the first meeting, which is what this is. The proposed annexation is contiguous to the North Village development and is located within the city's expansion area. Accepting the annexation petition for further study does not annex a property. It only begins the process for evaluating the annexation. Months of study will follow the acceptance of an annexation petition. As shown on our annexation process summary, we're just in the beginning steps of the annexation process. No vesting rights are granted upon acceptance of an annexation petition. And the city council approves the annexations and the city can deny an annexation petition for any reason. The pros of accepting this application will allow us to evaluate further the advantages into the city and, um, the annexed area. The cons of there of accepting the petition is there might be a perception that the city is promoting growth by adding another parcel for potential development. If accepted, the city will determine more, through more detailed future analysis on how this would fit within the city. The staff is recommending that the city council accept the Bush annexation petition for further evaluation. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dina. Council, do you have any questions?
I have a question. Um, so I think it, I'm trying to pull up right now. Coming up. Sorry. Okay. So on the concept, I don't know why I'm not getting these pictures all of a sudden. These are not slow. Could be. Could you go down to where it says concept plan? Are you not getting it either?
Picture of the proposed buildings.
Yeah. What are those buildings? I'm, I'm.
It's commercial on the bottom, residential on the top.
I think it's concept plan. You were just there. It says concept plan from G. Bush annexation.
You know what they're building like over by Home Depot in Park City?
Okay.
It's residential apartments on the top and a commercial space in the bottom.
Okay. So are we looking at something, what, what would be the height on that? Is it like two stories, three stories, four, five, six?
Well, that's to follow the North Village zone.
That's very suggestible as far as I'm concerned, but, um, yeah, that's it right there. So we have seven buildings. Um, the gray zone is parking. Is that correct? And then, um, but I'm not seeing, all I'm seeing is the square. So I'm just wondering what it is exactly. I know that's what Scott is saying, that it's, it's commercial, but there's nothing on there that's actually, I can't pull it up.
Would the property owner like to come forward and address that? Yeah.
Allow me if I can, mayor. So this, this is the first step of many we would go through to annex it.
I realize that. I realize that.
The last step would be the adoption of the annexation and a master development agreement that would ultimately contain council's wishes for this parcel. If this parcel doesn't meet council's wishes, of course you don't have to approve it. And so this is simply, I think, a blush at what they want to do. It doesn't mean what's ultimately going to be happening out there.
Matt, tonight, I mean, it was stated, but just to clarify, tonight, we're just accepting that we got a petition.
You're kickstarting the process.
Able to start talking about it.
Correct.
Or if you really don't want to accept the petition, you don't have to either. This is a completely discretionary legislative decision.
This is a key, key parcel in our annexation plan. It's within the map. It helps connect the North Village because right now we still have a couple little islands out there. This helps connect that.
Council, if there's no further comments, I will open it up for public comment because we did receive one public comment that I'd like to read. So this is the public comment time period for this action item. Public comment period can last as long as 10 minutes. Anyone's welcome to come forward, state their name, have a three-minute time period. But I'll first read the public comment that we all received in the email. This is a public comment from Mr. Mike Dixon. He says, "Good evening, city council members. My name is Michael Dixon. I live next to the property. Mr. Bush is petitioning to be annexed into the city. My address is 3480 north highway 40. Wasatch County has a zoning violation case against him for illegal buildings and construction debris. He was originally scheduled to appear before the judge in October 2023, but he has hired a lawyer, so it keeps getting delayed. He's scheduled to appear now in July. I've been trying to get this resolved for many years. I thought I should bring this to your attention before you consider his petition to be annexed into the city. Mr. Bush is a licensed contractor and knows the rules that he hasn't followed. Thank you for your time." time." Again, that's from Mike Dixon. Okay, is there any other public comment, either online or in the chamber? You're welcome to come forward for this agenda item on the Bush annexation petition.
I'd go ahead and like to make a motion on this, Mayor.
Hang, hang on, hang on. Anyone that wants to come forward? Anyone come off mute online? Okay, I will now close the public comment and you're free, counsel, to go forward with questions or motions.
I move that we accept the petition, uh, annexation petition for this project, for this piece of property.
Jeremy, that's not implying any use that's being proposed, right?
No, Mayor. Again, as, as Matt indicated, this is just the very first step in the process.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. All right, is there a second?
I was waiting for Mike, but Mike's sitting down there, so I can't really wait for Mike. I'll second it.
Okay, so there's only three of the council members that can vote on this with Mr. Johnson being recused for a conflicts of interest. So, we'll start on this end, please, with the vote.
Yes.
No.
Okay. That petition fails, everyone. We have to have at least three votes to accept the petition and there's only two votes right now. It's two to one. And Sid is excused. I can't vote. It's not a tie. So, right now, this petition fails. All right, we're going-
I'd like to-
There's nothing else we can do at this point. There's no other votes. I'm so sorry. The public comment period's closed. Sir, you're, I think, Tony, 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 there you are. Tony, I think there's always a delay when something like this happens. There's a waiting period, isn't there, before he can re-petition? That's right, but that- Right now, it didn't pass. It, it didn't pass. That's right. That's what I'm saying. The vote failed. The petition is denied.
We haven't denied the petition. The vote failed.
Yep.
Tony, would you come forward and explain what happens when the petition is denied in the first vote?
Well, we're, I'm probably going to need Jeremy to look into this.
Yes, I think we'll look at that.
Because if, if council fails to act within the timeframe allotted by state code, it's automatically accepted.
We have to-
So, I don't know if the failure to act tonight means it's automatically accepted. Jeremy?
Let's go to Jeremy.
Yeah. No, I think that's right. Unless we had a vote that was to deny the petition, I believe that, we haven't had a vote to deny the petition. We just haven't had a vote to accept the petition. So, I think Tony would be correct that, because we haven't denied the petition, that the, the petition would just be automatically accepted.
Okay, now, Jeremy, I hope you'll find the state code on that because usually when votes fail, they fail. So, we do have some extenuating circumstances tonight with a conflict of interest as well as a council member excuse, but we do have a quorum and that means all three would have to vote to accept, which hasn't happened. So, can you please verify-
We haven't voted to accept or deny, so.
The motion was to accept and it failed.
Except and it failed, but we haven't had a vote to deny. So, I don't think we've-
Okay.
I don't think we've had a-
Counsel, you can make a motion to deny.
So, you could make a motion to deny. If that motion passed, that would be binding.
Okay, I'm, okay, let's back up here. You're saying, hang on one second. Let's just try to resolve what Jeremy's saying. Jeremy, you're saying that anyone can make a motion to deny, but that would have to pass three to zero to, to deny it. Otherwise, it's in this limbo area. So, what happens when it's in limbo like this?
Well, I think state code says that unless we, unless we vote to deny the petition, that it's automatically accepted.
Can you find that, please, in state code and get that out to all of us when you can, please? We'd appreciate knowing that.
Jeremy, it's 10-2-405 of Utah Code number 1AII. A petition shall be considered to have been accepted for further consideration under this part of municipal legislative body fails to, to deny or accept the petition. Again, I think we failed to deny or accept the petition.
It's 14 days.
I think it's pretty clear.
Can I speak? If we fail within the 14, 14 days-
Go ahead, Mr. Phil.
I just, I think this can open it up to more discussion. I'd like to know why Councilmember Barney is voting no.
No, he's voting no for any annexation in that area. That's just me. I'm not going to approve any more agreeing to more density of any kind in that area. So, this is something I've done from day one. I had no intentions of making this a situation. I just said no. I've never not said yes or said yes before. So, it's just a matter of where I stand.
So, let's just read that state code one more time. A petition shall be considered to have been accepted for further consideration under this part of if, if a municipal legislative body fails to act to deny or to accept the petition. Okay, so that's 14 days. We've got 14 days for another meeting, but that's going to be past the 14-day deadline. Is that correct, Tony? And Matt?
The state legislature treats cities different on this process. So, for the smaller cities, we would be B, which would be the third, fourth, or fifth class. The council has to accept or reject at the meeting that is at least, the first meeting, at least 14 days after the petition was filed. So-
So, will the-
Which is this meeting.
Which is, so the June 18th meeting is out of the deadline?
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is the next regularly scheduled meeting.
So, that means anyone is welcome to make a motion to deny. And then, if it's still not being accepted or being denied, then within the 14-day period, the city council hasn't officially determined one way or the other and the petition is still accepted. So, any further motions? Any further discussion? Okay, then we're just going to have to let that sit. Mr. Bush, thank you very much for your patience on the 14-day timeline. Okay, now we get to do another fun agenda item, everyone, and that is the Smiths Marketplace Request Development Agreement for the proposed signs located at 744 North Highway 40. Gentlemen, you're welcome to come forward, but we're going to turn this one back over to Tony Kohler first.
Okay. I'm sorry, one quick question. And Jeremy, you might have to, I just read through this again. I'm not a lawyer, but you might have to clarify. I, I think if we don't take action during this meeting, being the next regularly scheduled meeting, and it's 14 days after the filing of the petition, I don't think there's another 14-day waiting. I think it's, it's accepted.
Accepted. It would be accepted.
All right.
Yeah.
Correct. Correct. It's accepted. And again, just to clarify, this is the very first step in the process. We're accepting it. That doesn't mean the council ultimately has to approve the annexation.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Aaron. Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, the last council meeting, council directed Smiths to reduce the size of the sign in the agreement to 15 feet. This is what that would look like. Also asked for staff to work to revise the agreement to make sure that no additional monument signs would be approved on the site. Staff and legal council have revised the agreement. The third party to this agreement will not, does not approve of this reduction to 15 feet. So, we're back to the negotiation table.
Tony, do you want to run through the agreement or should we have Jeremy run through the agreement that was in the agenda?
Perhaps Jeremy could, since he did the review. I'm happy to-
Jeremy, could we pull up just that agreement really quick and you just verify any concerns you have or just if you could briefly verify it and then let's open it up for more discussion, please?
Sure, Mayor. So, we, we went back. We, again, the, the agreement that was drafted before referenced their declarations. I think this one is much more streamlined. It's very clear that if they get the sign that they're proposing, that they would, that would be the only sign, the, the two signs, the one monument sign and then the gas sign would be the only signs that would be allowed. But again, they're proposing the 20-foot sign as opposed to the sign that council asked for at last meeting.
Again, you're saying two monument signs would be the only frontage signs, but also under our city sign code, they would be able to have signs on their buildings.
Correct.
And I think even place card signs and other so, so forth things in front of their entrances. So-
Yeah, I mean, little signs like drive-through signs and that thing.
Directional.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so counsel, well, Tony, you might have seen the emails that have come to the city council from Smiths as well as from Newlow Corporation, Mr. Haywood. Does anybody have any further comments or questions on what we've received this week? Or Tony, do you want to make any comments?
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead, Mike.
I appreciate Smiths. I appreciate collaboration and compromise on when, when, when there's differences of, of opinion. I think we came to that last meeting and Smiths came in with exactly what we asked for. They're asking for us to approve this and I think we can go ahead and approve it and let them work it out with the landowner that they're dealing with, the developer, that the disagreements between those two, it's not with us. I'm happy to approve this, even though it doesn't mean our current code. We have come to an agreement that by reducing, we can, we can accept this, give them an increase in height and an increase in their square footage allowed because they are willing to reduce the number of monument signs that could be put out there. Now, if they can't come meet that because the developer won't work with them, then they're going to have to come back, in my opinion. But I think they did a great job.
Okay, so Mike, you're saying you agree with Exhibit C that shows the 21 feet by 15? You're saying to go back to the 16 feet-
It's right here.
-high and the 15.6-
16 feet by-
Okay, but that's not what's in the agreement, just so you know. Everybody in Exhibit C, it shows the original size.
Correct, yeah. The agreement as drafted does have the 20 foot. So, if you are going to approve the 15 footer, make sure you reference that. Understand that, that the third part, there are three parties to this agreement and one party is not accepting of the terms.
Well, okay, sorry to clarify what you're saying. Then, if we were to vote that we liked the, what is termed there as pylon sign dash 15 foot, oh five, 22, 20, 24, if we agreed that we liked that and to go forward with that, you're saying it doesn't actually matter because one of the three parties is saying no unipotently?
They'll be back next meeting.
But what's, what's their alternative? They don't have any frontage. That's the developer's property. So, that's why they have to have an agreement with the developer to put a sign there.
The, the alternative will be, right, that, that the sign or, you know, the sign ordinance would just be met.
They don't have a, they don't have frontage. That's what I'm saying. So, that's the compromise. We're saying you can have this 15-foot frontage sign where there's no frontage.
Yeah.
They don't own the property on a Highway 40. That's what, that's what the old agreement is about. It's allowing them to have a sign on the developer's property.
But the developer does own frontage on-
The developer does, but Smiths does not.
And they have an agreement and they have to work out their agreement.
Yeah, Smiths has no right to assign on Highway 40, right?
They have the-
So, they're coming to us and we're saying, "We want 15 feet. That's what we want." And if they don't want to do 15 feet, they don't get any frontage because really, their agreement doesn't matter if it doesn't fit with what we want. Right, but that's, that's the deal. So, they're trying to get frontage on Highway 40 with a sign. They have an agreement with the developer to do that. Well, we're saying our side of the compromise is 15 feet. If you don't agree to that, then no sign on frontage. They could put a sign up by the- Yeah, but they don't have, they don't have any, they don't have any frontage. But they can only put a sign on their frontage. Which in this case could be, for clarity, those three along the street and then three down the, down the road, potentially the, the one that was in the original exhibit. We want it to be more of the character of Hebrew Valley. I mean, you go down into Orem, there's no 20-foot signs being built right now.
But that's the point. The question that's being brought to us and, and was part of the email that was given or that was submitted by Mr. Haywood is that the agreement that was done a few years back, and that's what they're referring to, and they would like to go back to that original agreement. However, we're saying currently, we have changed those laws and we have changed our sign ordinances. Therefore, this is the current day and current day, we go by what we have currently. And so, that's what we're saying is we are sticking to what they've already submitted here. This is great. I think it works well and I think that's fine. And any disagreements that are there would be between those two individuals and not the city. It has nothing to do with the city. We are just asking that this is followed by what the ordinance is currently. If we continue to go back to what was done in the past, then we, we never go forward. That's my thought. We stick to what we have. We stick to the ordinances that we've presented and that's where we work, that's what's worked with as far as the developers are concerned. That's my concern. Aaron, please.
A comment, and it's to counsel probably, mostly. I am in favor of the, this, and I realize this might not mean anything, but I'm in favor of the pylon sign 15 foot that we have in our, in our packet. However, given the potential of ending up with six, I think it was seven actually, if I'm correct, that was in the original petition last time we met, that the one that they, that Smiths was saying, "We don't want to do these. We want to do this instead." Pretty sure in that attachment, it was seven little signs. I would rather avoid that, even if it means taking a 20-foot, the original 20-foot. But I wanted to make this-
Original was 25.
20, 20.1 or something, 20 with six inches. I do want to mention one thing though, just to, just because we did get this email from Rob Haywood. I don't want to read the whole thing, but I want to just take an opportunity to instruct the public a little bit and developers for what it's worth. There's a line in here that says, "It is unfortunate that we were not made aware of the city changes to the sign ordinances adopted March and April of 2022. Had Smiths known the code was changing, their consultants would have filed the necessary documentation to be vested for their signage and avoided this discussion." I would just take this chance to remind everybody that's listening to this or that might hear it through the news, that you can and should take an active role in, in government by looking at the agenda items for the meetings that are upcoming and not be surprised by things because I don't like seeing this kind of, "It is unfortunate." You're right, sir. It is unfortunate, but that's not my problem. And so, just for what it's worth, again, my statement would be, I like the 15, but I would also accept the 20 if it means getting rid of the six other signs because I think that's going to look even more tacky.
Comments?
I just have two quick comments. I've been paying attention as I've been driving the last two weeks. Just the other night, I drove past Harman's on 800 North and Orem. There's no monument sign for Harman's. There's no monument sign for any of those businesses next to Harman's. There's no monument sign for Dairy Queen. There's a little sign that says the orchards, about five feet tall. You don't need a sign. So, I, I just don't feel, I'm accept, I don't like the height of this sign, but I'm accepting it as compromise and, and collaboration and I will vote for this. And I'd make a motion now, but if Smiths wants to make a presentation, I'm willing to not make a motion yet.
I want to read directly from the sign ordinance. This is actually very interesting.
Sure.
Low-profile monument, all signs not attached to a building shall be a minimum horizontal distance of three feet from the public right-of-way. All freestanding signs should be at least their height and distance from the adjoining side property line. Vertical separation sightlines, all exterior building attached signs shall be a minimum vertical distance of eight feet from grade to their lowest point. Signs which exceed three feet in height from grade may not be placed within 60 feet. Sightline triangle of motorists defined as intersection of two streets. The intersection of commercial driveway with, with a street, the clear view triangles reduced by 30 feet. Measured by intersecting lines parallel to the front of the curb, finding the intersection-
Measured by intersecting lines parallel to the front of the curb, finding the intersection point, measuring back sixty feet in each direction. And completing the triangle from those measurements. And asked, I mean, as far as I understand, a business can have a sign on their property. So. That's why I moved back to, Smith's does not own the property on the frontage of highway forty.
I believe they do, actually they own the, the property where their fuel station goes.
Fuel station, yeah. Then it would be one sign, ten feet. Tall or whatever it is right there.
That's what it is.
They couldn't have one right next to the intersection like they're proposing, it has to be sixty feet from the intersection. So we're, we're, we're going against a lot of our code, even with our fifteen foot sign. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to hear from the petitioners and see what they feel is reasonable.
You're welcome to come forward or your choice. Thank you. And tell us your name again, please.
Thank you. Um, thanks for the serious discussion. This is really important and. I've been able to sit through a lot of your business items tonight and uh, you guys are really fiscally minded and everything. Sarah to kind of show me the pie chart that talks about retail sales and how much you guys make on that, which is really a good. A good thing for any city, it's really important. My name is Rick Magnus, I am with AWA Engineering. We're the consultants to Smith's marketplaces throughout the inner mountain west. We're located in Salt Lake City, Utah. With me tonight is Mr. Roger Goff with uh, Smith's. Um, and I think many of staff know Roger really well. He probably should have one of those vehicles and uh, just ride around, but um. If, if I could just remind a few things and then we can go. Councilman Phillips regarding this site visibility triangles, we provided a, an exhibit last. Uh, time to demonstrate that these were going to be set back in their proper locations and everything else. I also gave a lot of uh, uh, attention to driving north and south. Uh, basically north and south on, on our state highway here today. I noticed there's a lot of things going on, those large power poles, they are, they're massive out in front of that property. Uh, you'll notice that the Smith's marketplace is set really far back, it really is. And I also appreciated the conversation we had last meeting about trying to find the target up in Jackson. That's a challenge because signage does not, signage is designed for a number of things, to let people know something's there. It's also to let them, if it's large enough, to make proper turning decisions or decisions as they are. Arriving, whether that is um, because of lack of visibility. Whether it's like the speeds on the roads, um, the turning movements that are happening there. Um, I, I also drove uh, s- south headed northward. And once you make that bend past our existing Smith's, you would be able to see this sign because you can see that big pole. You know, let's just, that's the, the marker that I was using. Um, once again, just as a reminder, a little bit with. And I do understand what happens here, I think. With regards to how the sign code changed during the whole. Approval process of Smith's and its relocation, um, the declaration, they, they closed on October twenty twenty one. Then Heber uh, city changed your sign code. Um, the last vote on that, I, by this council was April twenty twenty two. So it kind of went through winter and came into spring when that was changed. There was a participation agreement done in November of twenty twenty two, so now you've got signage, the sign code sitting there for. A good six months. And some of the things that were included in that um, participation agreement. Were things such as, we needed to negotiate a greater height of light pole standards in the parking. Because of just needing that to cover the, you know, the lighting that would occur in that parking. That was part of this participation agreement. We went somewhere else than what cold code was providing a shorter. Pole, we needed a, a taller one. That was included in the participation agreement. The canopy and parking lot, uh, lighting, all of that was included in there. That wasn't cur, in keeping with current code, it was just a, a deviation that needed to be incorporated. Into something that was um, already approved. Um, also, when you look at sign height, had we known. Once again, had we known that the sign code was gonna affect a multi tenant sign. Um, we would have included that also into our code because what we were. When we went for our zoning approvals and that upfront, we actually included a twenty five foot. Tall sign, and that's what, that's what was seen, that's what was approved, so. Once again, and, and the other interesting thing is many of the entities, and this may be the same, is that. Quite often it's discussed that signage is handled separately, so you kind of remove those things from the original. Applications that are done, and so amidst all of that. If we had included that in the participation agreement, we would have, that would have been an element. Now, had you have pulled that out for discussion or not, that, that remain, that's, that's beyond hypothetical now. But we would have had that within the participation agreement, the signage would have been. An item that was very concerning. Um, Councilman Cheatwood, I, I believe that's how I pronounce your last name, um, it would have been, it would. Code would have six monument signs spaced wherever they may be, you know, they need to be equally spaced apart. There would be six right now that would be on that frontage according to current code. And once again, we had talked about a multi tenant sign back when we had our participation agreement, but when we had other things going on. There never was uh, the idea that we were just going to put a bunch of monument signage out there. So we took, I took your advice of, hey, show us what a fifteen footer looks like. And I, I, I took that back. Uh, Smith's looked at it, others looked at it, and that's when we had the conclusion that. The square footage that. To, to allow other users even, so once again, this pylon sign becomes an offsite. Kind of um, sign, the pylon sign does for the two out parcels. Actually, they're all part of the same development, but these two parcels that haven't been developed yet. Can you imagine trying to run a business when you have a monument sign out front? And if, if traffic is coming from the north to the south, not even be able to see that on the roadway until you have passed. Maybe the intersection and you don't have the opportunity for a selection, or if you're heading north. You now have passed the last opportunity to make a right and you utilize that. Because you now see the monument signage well past the last decision point you have in that commercial development. That's kind of hard for um, for end users to.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
But is there not a light at that intersection?
There is a light at that intersection, you're absolutely right, and turning movements and decisions need to be made well before that signalization. But what happens is if someone goes through that light headed north, and now they're looking over and they see their favorite yogurt shop.
Also discussed too, that the one at Smith's in Park City, that that particular monument sign, is that a fifteen foot sign or is it less than that?
Um, that one is close to fifteen and the problem that they're having with that one right now is.
I understand.
With snow building up and everything else.
How many trees will be placed in front of this um, monument sign right here?
Um, it's the equal amount that's required for all planning. I don't have a site plan right now, but there can be some, but.
For landscaping in front, is there any trees that are in front of this sign, um, Tony, for landscaping?
So in the very front note, um, the original landscape plan. Demonstrated that there would be low shrubbery here, and then as you got further out. Though that, um, those trees would be in place, would are required by code.
All right, so then the other question I have then is without the high, with the fact that there is actual, actually. Position where you will be able to have two stop signs, there is a stop sign at the current. Um, area before the older Smith's, let's put it that way, and then there will be another one. So you have two opportunities to slow down at that point to see them. I personally, without any trees or anything else, I know that you mentioned that there's the tall, the, the tall telephone pole.
Of course.
I, I don't see how that is going to be a hindrance. I think that fifteen feet is, is significant. I think there will be plenty of ability to see the sign in enough time. And I, I personally don't see how it will slow any of your business whatsoever. In fact, everybody is so excited. In the Wasatchback area, knowing that this is coming in. You, you can talk to people coming from Duquesne. That know that this is coming in. You can talk to people from Vernal that know this is coming in. I, I, I feel strongly that the more we try to continue to nix any ordinances that we have. That we've put into place, each time we do that, we end up creating more issues down the road for ourselves. And at this point, I, I love what you've presented, I think it looks fantastic. I don't see an issue with it. I think that this will be, there, there are plenty of other similar to this throughout. The Wasatch front, obviously, Smith's is, which is small, and I agree with you, that's a little bit smaller than. I would even like to see this one, but. That's where I stand. I, I mean, everyone else can adjust with what they're feeling, but for me, I feel that this is, this is significant and. And I don't see a reason why we would feel that this isn't good enough, or that it would take away from the business, or that it would. Slow Smith's business. We know that you're coming in. You will get significant. Business from all of the Wasatchback, and that includes our neighbors too, the north of us. A lot of them will be coming down. I, I really feel that what we have here is exactly what stands within our ordinances. I think that it will be significant to, to take care of um, any concerns that we might have of. Anyone not being able to see a sign because we'll know that that sign is there and they will be able to see it. And so for me, I don't see any reason to change what you've done so well and, and especially coming back with the requests that we made. The last time, it looks great.
So once again, I appreciate that conversation, that direction in your viewpoint. Uh, we. I, just a couple of things. Commercial businesses in that aren't in the money to spend money. Um, if they felt like there was a need for, if everything could be met. At, in this case fifteen foot high with the reduced square footage of signage. We wouldn't, we, I wouldn't be even presenting the desire to go back to twenty. But it's felt by Smith's that they took a, they took a reduction when they were not allowed the twenty five, and yes, the code. Change passed them by and we're sitting here talking about this, but um, once again, we also have. Two end users that are not in support of getting an agreement with the city. At fifteen, this is, this is something that I know you're saying, we'll work it out. Well, what will happen? What could happen is six monuments in a row going along, looking like headstones on a, on a residential. You know, road. And um, the, the other thing I was just gonna mention, because this is just statistics. Do you know you have like average trips per day on that road going past Smith's? You have like thirty thousand headed north and twenty one thousand headed south. Whether that's the same, I don't see that being the same person just driving a hu, you know, a bunch of times, but what that equates to in a month. In a month, is it equates to um, nine hundred thousand trips, nine hundred. Cause every ten days is three hundred thou, or is three hundred thousand trips going in front of that. And then you also, I stopped in at the Chamber of Commerce, um, and they are so helpful there, they're great. And um, I said, all right, how many visitors do you have come here a year, visitors? And this is from all over, so signage is important again, because they gotta learn where to make the traffic movements when they do this. Um, she sat there and calculated, did some things and everything, and she goes, hmm. Three hundred, or, or three million, and I said, three million trips or visitors come into this place a year? Three million, not all of them know exactly where that Smith's is, but you want to capture them, I promise you, you want to capture them. And when they go into a Smith's, they're gonna pay money, then they're gonna have reduced amount on their fuel. They're gonna love that for their toys, and then guess what, they're gonna love, hey, kids, let's just go grab. Yogurt or whatever's in those other uses and let's go. And that is what you're looking for as the gateway coming down and. Fifteen to twenty, I, I worked for a sign company for one and a half years and I could not on the road tell what fifteen to twenty was. But I could tell um, sign square footage and when you can see it and then make good decisions. There you go. That's me telling you one more time, just that it's important for signage. Just as landscaping and everything else and architecture and, and design. But this was really important in that originally, we were going with twenty five, um, a foot tall, so. This feels like the compromise of twenty, yes.
Um, the, the Park City Smith's has no problem getting people there. I, I, I mean, is there verifiable data that the bigger the sign, the more business you do?
So the Park City sign, um, the characteristic of that store location. Is different than this one because, once again, if I come from the north to south here. I have that large hillside that's hewn out to allow that road to go through, this, the state road to keep going. With all that foliage, and there's nothing that can be seen. Another thing they don't have there in Park City are. These power poles that are so um, you, you know, you can see them, and there's a lot of visual things going on right there.
That, that nobody likes the power poles, so that's not a good talking point.
Well, no, 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 but what I'm saying, what I'm saying, it's a distraction to, can you imagine little monument signs trying to compete with? The, the volume of a, a, of these poles, and it, it's just the nature of that site, that's, you know, Smith's agreed. Hey, let's go purchase there and let's move our store there and.
Going from I eighty to Park City, you can't even see that there's a Smith's. There's no visual confirmation of that. Um, there's some come from the other direction, but that parking lot's totally full all the time, it's a busy store and they have a small sign.
Yeah, it's a shared, I mean, there's.
And when you, when you start like threatening, and we're gonna have six signs along, I'm like, what kind of community member do you want to be? I mean, this is the kind of community we're trying to build, is this showing what kind of community member Smith's is, like. No, we, no one wants six signs there, but if you're, if you can catch the vision of what we're trying to say, we, we want smaller signs. You know what I mean? Like, but if you come back and say, well, we don't get this sign, maybe we'll have six, you know, tombstone like signs on the side. That doesn't help. That's kind of like a passive aggressive backhand.
No, no, it doesn't, and it's not meant to be that way.
That's what it feels like.
That is what code allows.
What kind of neighbor?
Literally.
What kind of neighbor is Smith's gonna be?
We're gonna be a great neighbor, just like we have been in the past.
Well, I'm saying a sign.
Promise.
Here, it could be the same size as Park City, there's no verifiable data that it drives more business, especially in the day of Google, Google Maps. People visiting here, if they're gonna go to the grocery store, they're using Google to get there, they're not using signs. And new developments all over the state are shrinking their signs. A lot of them don't even have signs, it's just the store frontage signs, there's no pedestal signs. So I've, I've heard a lot on this topic, that's why I'm so passionate about it. Um, people don't want big signs and that you say, you know, like the Walmart sign is too big, even the hospital sign is big. So we want to come to an agreement, but where is that?
Well, uh, can we let Mike also talk?
Thank you.
I, great presentation, I really appreciate your, the, using data and numbers. Great presentation. I really appreciate your using data and numbers. Appreciate your passion, and you're doing a great job representing your client. You're well worth the fee, and you're experienced at this. You're not going to change my mind. People have changed their minds in this community and other communities about signs. We don't like, nobody wants the highway signs. People just don't want these things anymore. We've heard that when I was on the council a few years ago, as we went through this. It took us over a year. So we started before you guys closed. It was a very long discussion. So my point is this. Main Street's not I-15, and we're not flying by at 80 miles an hour and trying to get off at Beaver or Fillmore. It's not what we are. And maybe we're going to miss one or two people a day, but there will be 1,000 people a day going to Smiths, and they all know it's there. Again, I will vote for this and let you work it out. And if you can't, then that's too bad, because I accept this. I think it's too big, but I'm going to give that compromise. And I think that's what I've heard with most of the other council people. So I'm ready to make a motion unless someone else has to...
Please do. Just remember the change in exhibit C.
I move that we accept the proposed agreement for the sign contingent upon using the 15-foot sign that Smiths has presented. That is a sign we will accept, and nothing bigger.
I will second that.
And as well as the monument sign, correct, for the fuel. I mean, I want to make sure that...
Yes, okay, that, yeah, we had already accepted that last week. But the monument sign as presented for the fuel station is fine, meets our ordinance. This sign is a compromise, as long as we meet the other issues of the conditions of the agreement. And I hope you can make that work.
I do, too. I do, too.
Yes. Sorry about that one. Okay, so is everybody ready on the vote, or any further discussion? Okay, we'll start on this end.
Yes.
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 That passes 4 to 0.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your patience in waiting till the end of the agenda. Thank you. Okay, we are to our last agenda item, which is the agreement for the Jardine Lithgow to serve as the general contractor for the cemetery administration building. Mark Rounds, if you're ready, or Matt Brower, whoever wants to present this.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to take lead on it. Russ, I invite you to turn that TV screen on.
Thank you. I need your help. I'm sharing my screen, but it's not coming up with the image I opened up. Is it from over there? I'm actually looking. Shouldn't it be up there, though? Bear with me just for one moment.
Sure.
Thank you. Counsel, this agenda item regards the approval of an agreement with Jardine Malaska Construction Services LLC for the construction of the city cemetery admin building, clumberiums, and courtyard, as you can see on the screen now. Recall at your last meeting, we presented to you some strategies for funding the project, whose cost now is at $4,414,57 based up on a, let me bring that up real quick, based up on some value engineering that was discussed at some length at your previous meeting. That value engineering has been summarized on this sheet here. If I can make it a little bit larger.
I just also want to say quickly, Mr. Jardine's online.
Excellent, excellent. This is, recall, this is the sheet that you went through meticulously to identify a savings of about $600,000 to some change. These changes will be incorporated into the overall scope of work, bringing the cost of the project, as I just mentioned, to just over $4 million. In your packet is the agreement with Jardine Malaska for him serving as the general contractor for this project, and bringing about the project as we discussed. We intend to incorporate these changes so that it would reflect the changes that counsel discussed at your last meeting. I do need to note a couple of things. That if you choose to approve this agreement tonight, that on your June 18 council agenda will be an item to approve the interfund payables that would be necessary to complete the funding of this project. Recall the details. We are going to use $800,000 from Fund 71, which is your perpetual care fund, which is generally an endowment set aside to maintain the cemetery once it's completely built out. And the other fund was Fund 48, your transportation tax fund, using $500,000 from that. The strategy here is that we would then use the sales of the niches, there's 1,296 niches, and we would use those sales to pay back Fund 48 and Fund 71, and place the remaining amount back in Fund 71 to bring the total balance to about $2 million, which is about $1.2 million higher than your existing balance now. I also need to note that there are some minor adjustments that we intend to make to the agreement that's in your packet. For example, right now, it refers to mediation, utilizing the administrative law judge. Speaking with the city attorney, we want to change that. So that's one of the minor changes we would make. I also need to add in there the document package names that Lane Lithgow has developed as the architect that I'll have in there. His mother, I understand, has passed away. He's been out of pocket for some time. So there are some minor changes that we would make, but none of them are substantial. And so I'm asking that you, if you want to move forward tonight, to consider approval of the agreement with Jardine Malaska Construction Services in the amount of $4,414,57 to complete the administrative building for cemetery, the clumberiums, as well as a courtyard, as we discussed at your last meeting with these items on the screen.
So just clarifying. We're approving all of the contract documents in the agenda with changes to Article 6 dispute resolution, and what else?
There's probably a couple of other minor ones, such as adding in the names of the documents that Lane has prepared as the architect.
Adding in architectural documents.
There's some typos and misspellings that we got to correct, and other minor items that do not change the substantive of it at all.
Did we get a work-scheduled timeline?
We did. In the agreement, which I think is going to be the regulating document, says they'll have 365 days to complete the project once the notice proceed is issued. We would expect that notice proceed to be issued probably sometime later this month. Part of that process would be getting the building permit done. It's been through the process already. We need to finalize that process. Kevin Jardine would also need to supply us the performance bonds, as well as the payment bonds as required, and other administrative items.
Is there anything else that needs to be included in a motion, though?
I think tonight, I would ask that you approve the agreement, as stipulated here, understanding that we would have to come back on June 18 to approve, I think it's either a resolution or an ordinance, to establish the interfund payables between Fund 42 and Fund 71 and Funds 48 to finish the funding of this project. So even if you approve this tonight, and you don't approve the resolution next meeting, we won't have the funding necessary. So if you approve this tonight, you have to approve the interfund payables next meeting.
Is there any way that you can get us a finalized copy of everything in the contract, even if it might be approved tonight, so that we can see the final details?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is this price is including all supplies, everything else?
That is correct. So this would essentially require them to complete the scope of the work with these changes that we discussed at your last meeting. And so they'd be required to complete that project within a year, based up on this price here. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Aaron has a question.
Matt, quick clarifying question. The last two paragraphs of the staff report, there's a sentence, "It is important to understand that 2.5 million in niche sales may take numerous years to achieve." Is the 2.5 million number just the one side of niches, or is that for both sides?
That's for both sides.
Okay. So not only might it take years to complete, but it actually isn't possible until we fund the other side at some future date.
That's right.
Okay.
See, number 10 on the cost savings says, "Reduce clumberium units to one side." So was that what you were just asking about?
Correct. Yeah, so we had decided that we would only build one side. Right now, we'd build the other side at some future date. We're not sure about how the funding is or anything. I'm just clarifying for counsel that there's a plan to potentially repay this with the 2.5 million in niche sales, but that actually isn't possible yet. Only half of that's possible, even with the complete sale. They have, we have to build the other side in order to get that 2.5 million to come in. And then, Matt, one other question, if I can remember. Shoot.
I'm confused. Wait a minute. I thought we were putting both niches in, but we're just putting, yeah.
One side will be empty, yeah.
There you go. Thank you for clarifying.
It will sell.
Yvonne, just to clarify, so they would build the center building, they would build the building on the left, the clumberium on the right, but they'd only install the niches for one side. You got it. Yep.
I'm so sorry. I have no idea what my other question was.
It'll come back to you. It'll come back. Is there any other questions or discussion?
I just lost it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
That we approve as proposed.
I remembered my question, and it won't change your motion.
You can second it, and then we can do discussion.
Okay, I'll second it, but it won't change your motion. Throughout the staff report, we say Jardine Lithgow, but the contract only says Jardine Malaska.
Correct.
Is that okay?
Yes. Let me explain that. So Jardine Lithgow, this is Lane Lithgow's brother, Scott, are going to do this as a joint venture. But the contract is with Jardine Malaska Construction Services. And so that's who we are going to contract with, and that's who we are going to hold accountable for this contract, even though that Kevin Jardine may be working with Scott Lithgow.
I have one more question. I just thought of it. Still doesn't change your motion. With the fund, because we don't have the specifics about the fund approvals, how long do we actually have to pay them back? Like, with the way that the fund borrowing and stuff will happen, I realize that there's going to be an agreement, there's going to be a payable with interest. Is there a state statute to how, or a rule that says, "Yes, they must be repaid in eight years or 10 years or something?"
What state rule is, is that you're going to have to approve the interfund payable note that will include an amortization schedule that we will recommend to you in terms of the number of years. In the staff report, we also indicated that it's going to take a number of years for us to sell those niches. So we're not going to recoup all that cost quickly. It will go over a number of years. And so as we present that interfund payable note to you, we're going to be including a timeline for, you know, recouping that cost. We're going to have to project what that may be.
Gotcha. So one clarifying question there. If you give us an amortization schedule, and it's got a, I don't know, a period, let's say it's 10 years, it won't be necessarily, but let's say it's 10 years, and for some reason, nobody cares for these things, they don't sell at all. We have to repay that somehow. We will have to do it by raising taxes or raising impact fees, probably not impact fees, because only the building would be responsible for impact fees. But something will have to happen to repay those funds.
Correct. That is correct. The Fund 71, Perpetual Care Fund, is restricted revenues that has to be paid back. Your transportation tax is also restricted revenues for transportation. So if you approve this project and approve those interfund payables, you are committing to pay those two funds back based on some amortization schedule. Now, you do have flexibility to adjust that amortization schedule, but as long as it's reasonable. And if ultimately you can't sell these niches, you would have to look to the general fund or Fund 42 to make up that difference over some period of time.
Okay, my second still stands.
I can clarify. State code does not allow you to go any further than 10 years. You can, and the amortization is set up. You'll see it next time. It is for 10 years.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, yeah, thank you for that, because that's actually really important to note. So they have to sell pretty quickly, actually, right? Because we have, the one side has to sell quickly, we have to fund the second side, it has to sell relatively quickly, or we have to just think, as a council, whether it's our council or whether it's the next council, somebody's going to have to pull some monies from somewhere to repay these things within 10 years, whether or not they're sold. And I don't, Mark might remember, I don't remember that 10 years was the initial estimate of when we would sell through them all. I don't think that had, I don't think we had an estimate that I recall having in that initial discussion about how long we thought it would actually take to sell through these things.
I don't believe that that was ever discussed or anything I presented, but you got to realize that as time goes on, our prices are going to go up. We're also going to sell direct burial graves that could help pay this back. There's more revenue coming in than what we're projecting. We projected everything as a resident rate. The non-resident rate is a lot more. So, you know, we've, there's been studies done that cremation is the way of the future. People don't want to carve an impact on the property. Property is becoming a big thing. We're stacking. We're, death's coming to us all. We're going to have to do something, and this is the wave of the future, is what the industry believes. So we just give a general cost of the payback on our price analysis, and that you got to realize, if we get the Park City market, if we get Camas Market or whomever, and we're continuing to grow, people's got to have a place to be interred.
I agree. And I think they will, so I'm just making sure we're aware that we're counting against sales, that we don't actually have any proven record of having yet. Matt, will the thing on the next meeting, will part of that funding agreement be a proposal to include the, I forget the wording, but whatever we have to change in order to potentially get some of the impact fees for the building covered? That's a separate thing. Do we need to get that, do we need to get that rolling in some way?
It's already rolling. Russ is in charge of updating the capital facilities plan for parks and trails impact fees. That is a four, five, six-month process that will have its course. But the notion there is that some portion of the admin building, which will be used for parks, would be eligible for parks impact fees. Now, we won't know what those numbers are until we complete this process, but that is also another revenue source that could be used to subsidize this project. I might also add, I just thought of this, that even if we only sell all the niches on one side, that'd be enough to pay almost, almost 100% of the loan that you're looking at taking from Fund 71 and Fund 48.
Right, because part of the overage in the 2.5 is actually further funding that fund. It's going, it's not only paying it back, but it's actually, like, what did you call it? Supercharging the fund?
Yeah, so just to verify, so you're using about 2.75 million from Fund 42, which is general revenues. You don't have to pay that back. And we're filling the gap with, again, the 1.3 million, 800,000 from Fund 71, and 500,000 from Fund 48. Those are the two you got to pay back on it. Thanks for that clarity.
Okay, and then NVSSD impact fees on the previous discussion, we didn't get to, but we'll talk about it tomorrow. Okay, just brought it up. Just thought of it. The NVSSD wrote impact fees. Okay, anyway, is everybody ready for a vote? Okay, let's start on this end.
Yes.
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 That passes 4 to 0. Thank you. Let's go to the communication items, Matt, please.
Thank you, ma'am. I just have a couple of items. This is Unity Week, as everyone knows. We have a lot of activities planned. Wish to share with you very quickly what those are. The first, of course, is the Hebrew Market on May. This is the first of 12 weeks of the market. This is also our 26th season, and so we have a lot planned. We have a lot to celebrate this year. Jody told me that this is the first year we've already been sold out of all vendor spaces this far in advance. I'm talking food vendors, craft vendors. And so that's pretty exciting. What that means is we're starting to handpick vendors for higher quality, and so it'll be a better event for everyone. That is this Thursday, June 6 at 5 o'clock. We have two bands planned, and we have a great lineup for all 12 weeks. So I hope they'll see you there on Thursday. On Saturday, beginning in the morning at 9 o'clock, from 9 to noon, we have the annual downtown flower planting. We have the flowers that will be placed near the planter areas. We're looking for a lot of volunteers to assist us in getting those planted. And then at 1 o'clock, we have a very special afternoon planned. We have the dedication, rededication of this building, as well as the dedication of the water feature, which you've seen transform outside of this building. Again, those two are together. It'll be happening at 1 o'clock, and that'll be a very special event that we hopefully will see there as well.
I've seen a lot of names for the circle. I've seen City Circle, Compass Circle, Compass Plaza. Do we need to give it a real name?
We do. Staff's going with Compass Plaza for now, but we are open to ideas. This goes back to the overall branding, and we need to pick something that will have that cliche that we want, that people will remember, that we'll brand it. When they say that name, they know exactly what it is and where it's at. So right now, it's being referred to as the Compass Plaza, but we are looking to you... So right now, it's being referred to as the Compass Plaza, but we are looking to you to make sure you're comfortable with that or any other name that you may have.
Well, Yvonne's looking at me and smiling, because we noticed that the, this is so nitpicky, and I'm sorry, but we noticed that the W looks like an M, obviously, because it's, it's an upside down, but the reason it looks like an M is because the two sides aren't longer than the middle, but there's room to do it. It's, it's not as high as the E, I'm sorry, that's so nitpicky, but there it is. It just looks weird, and I know it's just a little bit more paint, but it needs to, it needs to be made a W. The other, the only other thing is, if we're going to call it a compass, is it north aligned? Because it looks building aligned, not north aligned.
I don't know if it's magnetic, nor, I don't know.
It looks building aligned, so I don't.
Wait a minute, we need to check that, people are going to think that that really lines up.
It's probably, I don't think it does.
And so that's, I don't think we can call it compass, because, because I don't think it does. I think it's building aligned.
Okay, we need to check that.
It is, it is, it is lying to the north, but maybe not perfect north, so.
People are going to expect that, though, because they'll all get out their cell phones and go, oh, this isn't really north. And, and that's something that should have been checked in the design, and I don't think it would be, I hope it's not a big deal.
At this point, we can't change it, the paint's, the paint's down, we're not changing it.
So we can't make it into a north?
We can make, it is probably not magnetic north, but it is north.
We can make the W bigger then.
But we can make the M a W.
We can make the.
M, it's an M.
I can get with Rick tomorrow and say, hey, we want a W, not a N.
We want a W, okay, at least if we can have that, I'm sorry.
Okay, now that we're all having the critique, the letters just look like a kindergartner taped them out and did them, we got to change them someday.
You need to be fancy.
They're not fancy at all, seriously, it looks like something I would have done.
It'd be done, it's just paint.
They have to be seraph, they have to be seraph, because that's also in our city logo.
That's my, I think we all agree.
Thank you, guys.
But you know what, everything else is good.
It looks great, they did a great job. I'm glad it's.
That's still a high-vating average, I'll take it, so.
You agree with me, though.
And maybe compass is not maybe the name.
I just think we need to have a council splash party.
I'm bringing my swimsuit next, July 18th.
Name anymore, I'm sorry, I just feel like that's something that could have been checked, but.
Heber Compass Rose.
The Heber Compass what?
Rose.
Rose?
Heber Direction Circle.
This is the same thinking process we went through.
Yeah.
Let's wait on naming it.
I'm not criticizing it yet.
But I definitely want those letters changed.
The letters have to change.
So we will make that happen, it may not be tomorrow, but we'll make that happen. But go back to my point, is Saturday at 1 o'clock will be a very, very special event, and I hope that you all will be there.
I'll be there.
And then lastly is, we have our inaugural safety, our, our staff safety carnival, Thursday from 11 to 1. It's an opportunity for staff to take their lunch, come out and, and join the carnival. For the last year, the staff has been earning safety coins that they can then submit for drawings and, and games that we're going to have, each department's going to have, right out here in the front, it'll be in front, so it's not on the grass, we won't damage the new grass, it'll be out front towards the sidewalk and the fire pit. But it's, it's important, because we are, we have really taken extraordinary steps, what's that? Thursday from 11 to 1. Yep, yeah, so it's, it's sufficient to give time for the employees during their break, during the lunch, to come out and enjoy it, and then head back to the office. But as you know, we had a very tragic accident about two years ago, and we have learned the lessons very well, and we're enforcing the culture of safety to the extent that we can, including with this safety carnival. So we hope that you'll be there, I'm going to need some help cooking the dogs and the burgers, if you've got some time, otherwise, come on over and enjoy the carnival and, and shoulder with staff, I know they'd love to have you out there.
Was there a unity event, was it Thursday at Market on Main, or was it Saturday evening that you also wanted help with cooking?
I think that was with Red, White and Blue Festival, the lunch.
I thought it was a free event, free dinner event for unity. No, just for red, white and blue?
Lunch, we need help from counsel to help, I think Scott and Yvonne, you were there last year serving, and we're going to, we expect, we had 600 plus people last year, we expect 1,000 this year, and we will need help serving. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion items?
Mayor, may I share a communication item?
Yes, please.
Real quick, as most of you know, we are trying to negotiate the Phase 1C contract with BHI. We're just a week from completing almost all of the work on Phase 1B. And I've, I've mentioned to each of you that we will not be able to complete all of the Phase 1C we had previously anticipated with the budget that we have for the project currently. And so we're negotiating how to get as much done as we can, and we will be bringing a contract to you to approve at some point. But what I want to let you know, and I, and I've kind of run this by all of you and got buy-in on this concept, is we don't have time to hold the contractor off as we move forward, and so what we're planning to do, and, and have your support, is we are going to direct them to move forward on, starting on 500 North, kind of as we advertise to the public, while we continue negotiating that Phase 1C contract, and then we will just change order of the work that they get done into the Phase 1B. It shouldn't be an amount that would be a concern, it would, it would be an amount that is okay to change order into that contract. So I just want to let you know that, because it is maybe a little confusing out there to see them starting on Phase 1C where we haven't officially approved a contract, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
And in our meeting, Mike, I and Matt and Russ, yesterday, we really tried to, I don't know if it came up when you were talking with them, is that we're really trying to make sure that when 500 North is closed, that we hopefully can get the Heritage Farms Parkway open as soon as possible with that light working to kind of replace 500 North, but it won't happen right, one after another, it might take a few weeks in between.
There's likely to be about two weeks of overlap where they're both closed, but we're hoping to get that 900 North or County, I'm sorry, Heritage Farms Parkway open within the next couple of weeks.
Right.
Are we going to change the sign 900 North that's hanging up now?
We are. Okay. We're just, originally, the plans were approved with.
Oh, really?
North, that was before we ever had the, the conversation of naming it anything else, and so that was how the plans were approved, and the sign was approved and installed, and so.
Middle of the night.
You change it with Google Maps, too, has it as Foothill Boulevard? I have no idea where that name came from, just.
I don't either.
To let you know, I have no idea where it came from.
It says that Midway is Mount City, after all these years, still.
That's it, just wanted, just wanted you to know that, wanted people to understand, yes, we're still negotiating that Phase 1C contract, but we, we don't have time to hold them off and get it done, Fifth North done before school starts up again.
I, I had someone who made a comment, too, that their concern, too, was that if the 500 is going to be closed, is it also slated to close Mill Road in some form or another, or is that another?
Well, Mill Road, Mill Road is closed at the, the roundabout, but, but there's no, there's no other closure planned on Mill Road right now. So what people will have to do temporarily is come down 550 East over to 500 East, down to, then you can go to Center, or you can go to any of the fourth, third blocks, you know, those north blocks to get over. So it is going to be kind of a hassle, while both of those roads are closed at the same time, but we're trying to remedy that as quick as we can, but we, we're just going to have to deal with it.
That's a big concern. Yeah. Okay, so do we have any idea, you said it'd be a two-week overlay?
We hope.
Oh. That's, that's what we're hoping for, is about two weeks. So I know that UDOT has done some programming on the signal, there's, there's one issue we're trying to work through right now, still, before that road opens up, and also, I'm trying to get them to slurry seal that road before we open it up, too, they think they can get that done within the next two weeks, restriped, and so although it will be a hassle with traffic, I think it's better to do that than open it and then close it again to slurry seal it a few months down the road, we just, let's, let's just get it done.
I'm hoping, then this is my next question, and I guess this is even to, to Chief Sever and the, and the department, having police officers there, because my concern is, is that individuals will become extremely impatient, they will use that as a way to just barrel through, they don't want to wait, they'll be angry, frustrated, if they're running behind, all of those issues, I think it's something that we should consider as well, that we need to be mindful of, that there's people like that, I mean, they will, I'm not saying it's me, so don't, don't smile like, just saying that there will be individuals, I've noticed that the last time, when we had roads closed that prevented people from going in different directions, or they had, you know, one road closed this way, another this way, that was a situation, too, and that was something that people who lived in those areas witnessed. I mean, I, I saw people going down our road when a couple of the other roads were closed, and were just barreling through because they were angry that they had to go some way, in a different way, so.
It impacts the public, it's a legitimate impact, and people get frustrated.
And I think it's something we need to make sure our public understands, slow down, I know it's hard, we, we're all going to deal with it, but at the same time, to be aware that we will have our finest out there watching you.
You have the Sasquatch smile, please. Sasquatch smile? I don't know if I've got a Sasquatch.
Russ. Russ, I appreciate, I just wanted to mention, I appreciate the forethought to make sure that we start on that so that we can finish before school starts, because that safety concern is not worth the risk, and I appreciate the forethought.
We need to, thank you. I did, but this is for chief, I just have some pictures and I'll share those with you, okay?
It was excellent, Stars and Bars banquet, absolutely excellent.
I wasn't able to go, I wish I would have been.
Kudos to you and your staff.
I was in Mexico, so, you know, just a horrible trade-off.
You missed, okay, there's a, is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Thank you.
Thank you.